I call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Northfield Public School Board. Today is Monday, March 11, 2019, and the time is 7 o'clock PM. Dr. Hillman, there were a number of items in the table file?
Yes, you have a number of items this evening, including the building projects progress report that will be part of Sal Bagley's report from World Architects. You also had the slides to accompany the narrative from Director of Technology Services, Kim Briskie. You also have a number of personnel items, including appointments increased, decreased, changing an assignment, and a number of other things. One point I'd like to share from the table file is you'll notice under "appointments" that we have come to an agreement with Dr. Laura K. Allen to serve as Northfield High School's interim principal from August 5 through December 20 of 2019. As you know, we've approved an unpaid leave of absence for High School Principal Joel Lear to accompany his family on the St. Olaf Global Semester. Again, he'll be in several countries, looking at the education system and working through that with several St. Olaf students, and so we're excited for him to have that opportunity and bring that global view back. But of course, then we need to have a solid replacement. And anyone who knows Dr. Allen, she was a longtime administrator in this school district, including stint as middle school principal. She's been an administrator both in South Washington County and in Rosemont, Apple Valley, Eagan until she has retired, and she's substitute taught here, and she's also done a number of interim roles in her previous district. So we are very excited to have a very solid, capable leader in Dr. Allen to join us for fall of 2019.
Excellent. Okay. So if there's no objections, we'll add these items to the agenda as we move forward. We now have an opportunity for public comment. This is a chance for anyone residing in the Northfield Public School Board to -- school district to address the board. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the board? Seeing no one come forward, we'll move on to announcements and recognition. Dr. Hillman?
Yes, we are full of announcements and recognitions this evening. First of all, we have two professional learning community groups who are working across the district on augmentative and alternative communications. It's designed to provide better access to their education and learning environment, and they've been accepted to present this work that they've developed in their PLC at something called Charting the Seas Conference in Alexandria, Minnesota, in April. I want to tell you that Charting the Seas Conference is a very well-known regional special education conference where a lot of new ideas in the area of special education are shared, very innovative practices. And so Ann Ackerman, Christine Howard, Melanie Klein, and Lori Warner are presenting on the Bridging the Gap with AAC Communications from School to Home. Pam Manning and Sarah Webster will be presenting on Assistive Technology in Early Childhood: Increasing Access for All. And these two PLCs requested and received a Northfield an ACT grant. That's our former -- it had -- I can't even remember.
DCSDC, the former Curriculum Committee and Professional Development Committee.
So they received an ACT grant through the district to support their work, and they're thrilled to go and share this with people across the region. Again, if you talk to people in the area of special education, Charting the Seas Conference is one of the most respected venues for someone to present, so we're very proud of those special education staff members. We would also like to congratulate Senior Connor John Westling for getting first place in the state of Minnesota in Best Prep's Stock Market Game Essay Contest. Connor will be honored at an awards ceremony in May. He participated in the Stock Market Game through the business finance class taught by Mrs. Julia Wolner. We also have a number of activities in athletics that we'd like to congratulate. We want to congratulate our wrestling team. They took home the consolation championship of the state tournament, fifth place overall, and we had several people who advanced to the semifinal round, including Traitor Anderson, who is the state champion at 132 pounds. Quite an accomplishment to win the state. Drew Woodley, a state runner-up, very close, very tight match, right down to the end. He placed second at 138 pounds. And then Chase Murphy and Jake Mezner both placed fourth place at 106 and 113 pounds, respectively. Certainly a historic season for the Northfield Raiders wrestling team. When we look at the Northfield Gators swim and dive team, they placed second in the state, so runner-up in the state. And what's really interesting about that is that showed the depth of the team, because we did not have an individual state champion, yet we placed second in the Single A competition. Andrew Becker placed third in the 100 freestyle, fourth in the 50 freestyle. He also helped the 200 medley relay to a third-place finish and the 200 freestyle relay to a fourth-place finish. He broke his own school records in the 50 and 100 freestyle, and also was part of a team that improved their own school record in the 200 freestyle relay. That included Mr. Beamer and Dylan Schmuzik and Eric Larson. They also had another group of students with Jack Meehan and Marcus Hauck and Ethan Schaefer, who will also run that medley relay team. A number of other -- we had Beamer, Schaefer, Hauck, and Larson combined on the final 400 freestyle relay, which took second place. Senior diver Oscar Hannafill took fourth in the diving competition. And then we also had a number of -- Beamer placed 11th in the 200 free, Hauck provided a 10th place finish in the 100 butterfly, and 11th in the 100 backstroke. And Meehan finished 13th in the 100 breaststroke. So we were up there for that final day. It was quite the sight to see all those Northfield swimmers at the University of Minnesota pool, and just a great job all around by the Northfield Gators, and again, just another great season. And we want to give a shout-out to the middle school orchestra, who at the Minnesota Orchestra Festival on March 6, 7, and 8 -- or, excuse me, on March 6, the 7th and 8th grade orchestras performed for two judges, worked with a clinician, and watched a few other middle school groups perform. Both the 7th and 8th grade orchestras received a superior with distinction rating from both judges, giving them an invitation to participate in Tier 2 of the festival. These groups have been invited to spend April 15 at Orchestra Hall in Minneapolis to work with musicians from the Minnesota Orchestra, rehearse onstage at Orchestra Hall, and perform a concert with other orchestras who received that same super distinction. So those are your -- some of your announcements for this evening. Lot of individual things are just a great season for all of our athletes.
Good, and many spring sports scenes starting today.
And I heard they all played outside today?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, board members, other announcements, things they want to share?
You might remember from Barb Warrenson's report on Arcadia Charter School, which we authorized, that the only activity that they compete in is poetry recitation. And this week was the state finals of the Poetry Out Loud Poetry Recitation Competition, and for the third ti -- second time in the past three years, an Arcadia student is the state champion in poetry recitation. Bella Colari was the champion this year, so she'll go on to Washington DC for the national championship.
Standing.
Excellent. Any other things board members would like to add?
Amy, it's such a great time for all these accomplishments, but I just wanted to mention Rock and Roll Revival, which I believe have six sold-out performances.
That's correct.
We're halfway through. It's the hottest ticket on Facebook right now, I can tell you that. Lots of people looking for tickets, and I had the pleasure of going over the weekend, and it's a great show. So if you have tickets, you're lucky. If you don't have tickets, try Facebook.
Yeah, that's just such a great community event. You know, 120 students and just so many parent volunteers and community volunteers. It's really a total community effort. And yes, we wish -- we could encourage you to go to the show. There's three performances left Thursday, Friday, Saturday, but as Amy said, these tickets are sold out. Some people do try to go to walk-up and try to get, you know, snag a walk-up ticket, and if you're lucky enough to do that, you should probably buy a lottery ticket.
That's right.
Because you're having a very lucky day.
Exactly.
So good. And then we'll just recognize tonight the number of students here from Sarah Swan-McDonald's Global Studies class. So I know it's part of the curriculum to attend and do something with the community outreach, and so I see a number of you have chosen to come tonight, so we're really glad.
You're welcome.
And we think there's some really good presentations tonight that I think you'll enjoy, so we thank you for being here. Okay, so we can move on now to -- oh, I'm sorry, Noel.
I would acknowledge the women's basketball team that was in competition down at Rochester. And we didn't go down for it. We listened, and it was an exciting game to watch. And while the numbers, the numbers don't show the win. You played with distinction?
Yep. Quite a section final.
Quite a section final, and we're great representatives of Rochester.
I think it's important to note, that's the third consecutive section final that the Northfield girls' basketball team has participated in. Of course, last year with a great run to second place of the state tournament, but you know, the fact when you are in the section final every year for the last three years, it says a lot about the program and the depth of the students that we're developing, so...
I see some basketball players in the audience, so congrats on a great season. And we have the boys playing tonight in Austin in 45 minutes -- or no, in Rochester.
Yeah.
They're playing, but they are -- I'm not sure what team they're playing, but they're moving on through sections as well. Okay, so we have our first item for discussion is we are excited to welcome Von Dirks and Sal Bagley from World Architects to give us an update on exciting things happening in our district in terms of our bond projects.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Hillman, thank you for having me. I'm Sal Bagley with World Architects. Josh Cooper is here from Canuteon Construction. He's going to help me hand out physical copies of what we're going through tonight, so you saw.
I'm sorry, Josh. I know, I've only met Von a couple of times, and so I apologize. And of course, I've met you as well, so I apologize.
You better look at it, so.
Von is still on his way back, yes. He's traveling back from spring break this evening, but so there are two books coming out that are physical copies of what I'm going to go through tonight. We are doing a schematic design update of both the Bridgewater Elementary School addition and renovation, as well as the new Greenville Park Elementary School design. So we're going to go a little bit over a planning and design process before we get into the outcomes. And as always, we like to start with why, so we framed our core planning group. Both of our core planning groups work with the district's vision and mission, that we're all working in service of this facility's mission. So to describe the planning process, we've gone through, all projects are planned to have a core planning group, and what that core planning group is really made up of staff, parents, community members, and other stakeholders who all give input on the design. And we go over this at the beginning of the process with them, that they are empowered to make decisions and be willing to make decisions, request information when needed from their peers. So we sent them on several homework assignments to go gather more input, or consider their thoughts, or fill out a survey. But that S group really works with us to help set the mission and philosophy of the So in terms of the design process, we use a couple terms in architectural design that I want to explain. So we've been going through schematic design, but that's really putting all the right pieces in the right place. Sometimes we talk about landing the boulders, and that's when we are working with the core planning groups. After this point, we'll be going into what we call design development, which is when we start layering on engineering and our traffic studies. Where do columns need to go? What does the mechanical system look like? And getting into user group meetings, which will be individual meetings with every different constituency group. So meet with art teachers about the art room very specifically, and talk about where all the cabinets are and the light switch. So we'll be getting into more and more detail, moving from 2D to 3D, and doing what we call coordination with our engineers. So both of these phases have a significant amount of input from all of your stakeholders, and we've just come to the end of the schematic design. So I'm going to start with Bridgewater Elementary School. The Bridgewater design team met three times. We were scheduled to meet four times, but Mother Nature had other plans on one of those days. And we really worked to develop criteria and talk about the layouts of both the new office and the renovated current office into the special education suite. Here's a site plan of Bridgewater. All of you are quite familiar with this. So to remind those who are not familiar, the referendum scope was to build a new main office addition, to create a secure vestibule at the front door of the building, and then to turn the current main office into special education space. So that's the referendum scope. Here's a diagram reflecting that. In the golden rod color at the bottom of the diagram is that main office addition, and then in the coral color in the middle is the renovated area. That's about 17, 1750 square feet of renovation, and just over, or just around 4,000 square feet budgeted for addition to improve security. So what we do with the core planning group before we start drawing options is really develop criteria. So criteria help us set the philosophy of the project and talk about important adjacencies, that this person has to be next to this person, or these programs can't be near each other, how things need to operate. So we work to help them write these statements to clarify their intent. So for Bridgewater, there were really two categories. We wrote criteria about the office addition and about the special education renovation. So the office addition states that the main office needs to be directly adjacent to the main entry to have a secure vestibule. It's the main goal of the project. Visitors need to enter the office to be screened before accessing the building. It's important to maintain a welcoming atmosphere for visitors and parents. We did have the good fortune of having some parents on our Bridgewater Core Planning Group who are willing to come meet during the middle of the workday to talk about that visitor experience, which was lovely. And then there are some important relationships within the office. So needing the nurse to have direct access off the hallway, so six students can access the nurse, while also still being connected to reception. The principal needing direct access to reception and being able to see outside for security, see people approaching the building. And last but not least, reception needing visibility to see people approaching the building. Then when it came to our special education renovation, the main goal was to create appropriately-sized resource rooms for services that are currently being delivered in undersized spaces, so in a variety of closets, or spaces that were designed as maybe single-person offices being used for groups of six to eight students. So that was the main goal, as well as creating a centralized location for these staff to collaborate and be in a convenient location for student travel. So these services being centralized benefits both staff and students. And to have a dedicated conference room for IEP meetings, because they place a high demand on the conference room in the main office. So after talking through all of those criteria, we worked through diagrams with the group. Site plan diagram here, you can see the existing building is in gray, and the main office addition is in that golden rod color. Not very different in site plan from what was shown during the referendum. And overall, again, not much different, but if I zoom in, this is the schematic design diagram of the main office. You can see here a secure vestibule directly connected to reception. Areas coming off of -- oh, I just remembered I have a clicker. Areas off of reception are direct access to the principal and the nurse, so that these all, the receptionist can provide backup for both of them and have clear communication. Certain people being on the outside of the building to be able to see people approaching the building, and the nurse being able to be directly accessed off the hallway for students. Other features I should mention are a workroom, a secondary flex office, a conference room, some storage, staff bathrooms, and then bathroom and storage for the nurse. And then when we come to our special education suite, which is located in the current main office, for those of you who are familiar with the building, this is the curve that represents the entry to the main office, so this is the reception area currently, and the conference room is currently right here. So like I mentioned before, the priority was to create many equal-sized resource rooms that are appropriately scaled for the number of students that are going to be served in them. So there was a high priority in developing these six, what we're calling R1 through our six resource rooms, of groups of six to eight students to be working with a staff member or two, a couple smaller spaces in office, and a small breakout flex area, as well as a motor room. Before I move on to New Greenville, are there any questions about Bridgewater?
Any other questions? Amy?
So I have a couple questions on the design. I'm sure you have reasons behind a few things, and I'm just curious what they are. So for the very front of the building?
Yeah.
I'm wondering why the addition doesn't extend the full length of the gymnasium?
Sure, we can certainly talk about that. So we did try to, if I go back to the overall, there was initially a desire to connect back to this existing hallway, so there was maybe a back entrance to the main office. But what that really led to is with the square footage allotted, it was a very, very long hallway. So spending a lot of the square footage, you budgeted on circulation. So it was important to get certain relationships on the outside. So the principal, the other office, and the conference room having direct access to natural daylight was important. Having an exit out of the main office in case there was an incident happening in the main office was important. But then the nurse wanted to have direct access off the hallway so that students could come and go without kind of traipsing through the main office all day. So those relationships really dictated what the most, the farthest-away element was. And the other idea was that the conference room being a little bit tucked out of the way is that private conversations could be had, or maybe sensitive conversations, without it being kind of right in front of the receptionist, or if a parent's having a tough meeting, something like that. So that led to the conference room being done at the end of the hallway. But if we took the square footage that was allocated and strung it along the entire length of the gym, it was very, very long and skinny.
So the real implementation is just in square footage? You have so many square feet to work with?
Correct.
How you ended up with the shape?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. And then the other question I had was about the flex space?
Sure. Right in here?
Yeah, so to me, that, and maybe it's just because I don't know how wide it is, but it looks more like a hallway than flex space?
Sure.
And I'm wondering why, kind of where the doors are and the part that comes down, you could, is it really useful, is it all useful space?
Sure. So that group's priority is to make it useful space. I also think they are kind of trying to get as many usable behind closed-door spaces as possible. We actually have a meeting with them from, I think, 2:00 to 3:00 PM tomorrow, something like that, to go through the exact details of these spaces in one of those user group meetings I talked about. So where's the door? Where's the light switch? If there's a window into the space, where is it? Is there any built-in cabinetry? So I don't actually know where any of the doors are in this quite yet. I have some ideas. But they were hopeful to create a space where maybe one teacher or one para with one student might be able to go, so that flex spaces is small, but trying to make any circulation a usable learning space, as it will be a suite, so you can have doors that close off here and here. So I do think if this is wide enough, it's enough space for a small table, or two chairs over a coffee table-type space, so just providing that little bit of breakout space. But I don't actually know where the doors are quite yet.
Okay.
We have a meeting with most of the SPED team tomorrow to figure that out.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Rob?
When you were showing the front office space, you were talking about how the conference room was kind of more private in the back, but that, for the SPED conference room, is right up front, and currently it's very glass and very, you can see right into it, and it's not very private. So would there possibly be changes to the glass frontage, or are those things you're going to discuss in the user group?
So I have a little bit of inclination on what the group's looking for. So I think the glass up high, maybe not dissimilar to the high glass in here, brings in some valuable daylight from that atrium-type space, but they do want privacy up to a certain height, maybe standing height, so I think there's going to be some modifications there, if I had to guess. Had some discussion about that. That conference room being off the hallway was actually an important criteria for them too, so you didn't have to go into the suite to use that space. So we knew it had to land on the perimeter somewhere, but address the privacy concerns. But the final details probably talking about tomorrow. Yeah.
Dr. Iverson?
So it could be that I just don't remember from the bond referendum, but the existing spaces that special ed occupies, it seemed like we were going to free up some space, and I didn't know if there's renovations for those spaces, or nope, it's just whatever it is, it is.
Yep, so actually, there's a number of things, is that most of the spaces, as they're looking through who is going to move now. And as they're looking at who is going to move, there's a variety, they're still not quite done with that yet, but it's going to be a combination. In the past, we've had some people who have been sharing a full-size classroom. We've had some people who have been working in what were storage closets, and there's a need for storage. So you know, some of those things where we've had people working in storage closets will move to these much more appropriately-spaced, small classrooms, and then Bridgewater will get some very necessary storage space back. And so it's a comp, they haven't decided who's going to move into this space quite yet, but those are the kinds of things. So there isn't any, there aren't any dollars designed to renovate the spaces within the current building where people are, because frankly, we did some, a little bit of renovation to get some airflow on some of those things. So we'll have well-ventilated storage closets, which should be good.
We probably spent the whole first core planning meeting just deciding who was important to move to here, so that was kind of task number one of what resources do we really want to centralize. And then we had to work out the relationships at the other two meetings, so...
Yeah, of course. Rob?
Looking at the schedule, you have like...
Oh, sure. Yeah, the best, at the back of your book for you have...
October, November of this year, it says punch list, furniture technology. I'm just wondering, like, how much new furniture and new technology has to be purchased for this, or how much is reused, like, just moving an office from one place to another?
Sure. Dr. Hillman, correct me if I'm wrong here, but... Well, I was going to say, I think the intent is for them to reuse the furniture they have for now, so that we can have time to order appropriate furniture. So you should be ordering furniture like yesterday, for furniture to arrive for fall. There's a high demand. So the intent is to reuse as much as possible, and then once we have the space constructed, then go through a similar process to this, actually, with the core planning group, to make appropriate selections that are, I'll say, equitable with what's happening at New Greenville. So making similar-type decisions about similar vendors and having some standards. Technology, I don't know if I can speak to that one quite as much.
I'll be happy. And again, we're going to run a core planning group for the furniture, because as we think about furniture, not just in these new projects, but across the district, looking at what are the best kinds of furniture really to support student learning and collaboration. You know that we have a couple of demonstration rooms here at the high school. You've seen some changes that we've done here. We're looking to try to provide some standards through the district. So when we're looking to outfit a classroom in this way, there might be two or three choices. That way, we can leverage having the same kinds of things across buildings and so on and so forth, and when we switch furniture out down the line, we already have a menu that we can pick from, so we're reducing the amount of time that we have to do research in those kinds of pieces. When it comes to the technology, a lot of our computers are already on a regular cycle, so we anticipate that basically the office staff will just move their existing computers, unless they're up for replacement, which they are typically up for every five years. The kinds of new technology that would go in the office, we may look at a few things in terms of some different kinds of security camera, those kinds of things will be more holistic. But in this case, most of what's going to happen is the stuff from the current office will move until such time that we establish the standards for the furniture. Then that furniture will be changed out, and then the existing technology would be moved or retrofitted to a project, because we're not doing a holistic piece of the building. Does that make sense?
And I don't have a slide about it, but I should just cover, at the back of the book we handed out is schedule and budget. So the schedule shows we're working on design through end of April, so we're on a quick timeline with this one, so we're trying to get it open as fast as possible. So much thanks to the core planning group for being willing to meet weekly. Hoping to wrap up our user group meetings tomorrow, so tomorrow will be our second meeting with the office staff to confirm these relationships, and we've gotten into a great bit of detail with them about exactly what the cabinets are going to look like, and where the light switch is, and all that good stuff, with the intent of going out for bid in May, and then going into construction the summer into the, into the fall, and occupying as soon as possible in the fall. And then you can see a budget there of how much addition and renovation was budgeted, and where we currently stand. So showing a little bit smaller than planned, new building addition, a little bit larger than planned renovation, and you can see the balance there, showing that we're expecting to be on budget.
And I think we should point out that your, our original plan was that the Bridgewater office would open with the rest of everything else in 2020. When we looked at this, we thought, let's, this is a project that we felt we could get a lot of traction with over the summer, and anything that we can finish a year ahead of time is just going to make that next year that much simpler.
Absolutely.
So we want to thank both WOLD and Canuteon for helping accelerate that timeline.
Yeah.
So I'm just curious about the height of the addition. Is it as high as the gymnasium is, or is it going to be one-story, or...
Probably be more one-story, similar to the height of the vestibule that's there now, or perhaps the cafeteria. We're probably going to want to work with the architecture that it indicates that it's the main entry and distinguishes in some way, but likely not as high as the gym. So maybe story and a half-ish, which is the gym height, or the cafeteria height, but just getting into some of that now.
Great.
Yeah. Finishes too, just getting into color of the carpet, color of the paint, which brick color you're going to match, because I don't know if you are familiar, it's just across the way, but several different colors to pick from, so getting into that architecture If there are any other questions, I think I'll go on to New Greenville, which followed a similar process. So we've got a list of the design team or core planning group here, which is a healthy mix of staff, administrators, parents, and community members.
And we've got some students who are in the audience tonight, who are also part of that team?
Yes. And we had immaculate attendance, some of the highest I've seen, and we had weekly meetings when Mother Nature let us. So all the thanks in the world to them. Again, we're working on a fast timetable with them. So they have met four times so far, January 15 and 31. You can see a two-week gap in there, where you guys had a couple snow days on our planned dates. Had a lengthened meeting on February 21st. We went for three hours that day to try to catch up, and then recent, as recently as February 28th. So here's the list of names here, and then we also developed criteria and guiding principles with them, similar process. And took an all-day set of building tours on several buildings to go see what other districts are up to and understand different ways that a new building might be configured. So the site is on the same site as existing Greenville here. To go over the referendum sculpt to remind people, the space summary was a 90,000 square foot elementary school. This is a little bit too hard to read, so I'm just going to go through it fast. We have been working with the core planning group to revise the space summary or tweak where needed on their guidance, but still sticking to that 90,000 square foot. Their guiding principles. So guiding principles, I should back up, are really more subjective statements about the atmosphere or quality of the building, maybe the philosophy, whereas criteria are kind of hard and fast, black and white statements. So the guiding principles for New Greenville. The building should meet the needs of today while providing for future flexibility and potential expansion, including new technology for both education and systems. The layout of the building should be easy to supervise and intuitive to navigate. Signage throughout the building should be inclusive. The building should be safe and secure while being warm and welcoming for students, staff, and visitors. And that the building should have multiple lockdown zones for different times of day, so allowing the building to be used in a variety of ways while still securing your assets. The site design, excuse me, should separate parent, bus, pedestrian, and bicycle traffic, recognizing the many ways people come to your site. The building design should provide opportunities for natural daylight, acoustic control, and occupant comfort throughout. The design should provide a variety of learning spaces to promote flexibility and adaptability, major focus of the core planning group to be flexible for the future. And of course, the design should be fun and interesting to students. The media center should serve as the heart of the building while being separated from circulation, speaks to the benefit of current Greenville having that shared asset of the media center, but the unfortunate that it's also kind of circulation path through it, so trying to work around that. The building should support community services, you know, additional clothing, a food pantry, et cetera, near the main entry to support privacy. The design should incorporate adequate storage for year-round functions and that furniture should be mobile. The design should foster a sense of community and support staff collaboration, which speaks to where resources might be located. The design should provide green space and opportunities to connect to nature. The design should incorporate sustainable features and energy efficiency. And the project should provide a variety of pull-out opportunities. The building will be, so now we get into a little bit more of the organizational criteria or principles. The building will be organized into grade-level learning communities. That was of great discussion around the core group. Each of these learning communities will have a flexible learning area for collaboration and small group work. These spaces should be designed to be adaptable. Special education should be located in a centralized area for student access and collaboration. And that that suite should be in a quiet, private area. That's similar to the philosophy developed at Bridgewater. And the design should support a variety of large group gathering spaces for grade-level meetings, speaking events, performances for family, et cetera. The design should support community school functions, including access to the flex labs, the collaboration areas, as well as most of the specialist spaces. So those were more about the philosophy of the building and the atmosphere it should project. Design criteria speak to direct relationships or how things need to function. So these are a little bit more black and white. The site design should provide a safe connection to the surrounding community for pedestrians and bicyclists. Similar main office relationships to Bridgewater, needing the main entry to have a secured vestibule directly connected to the main office. The nurse being at the main office and having a connection for students from the hallway. The workroom being directly off the hallway with a connection to the main office. Spaces used regularly outside of school hours, so the gym, the cafeteria, flex labs, music, and art rooms should be located for easy access and security. And that the classrooms areas could be secured off from those. So if you had a nighttime event happening, you could secure your classrooms. Classroom should have four walls with natural daylight and visibility into the collaboration area. Speaks to some of the challenges at current Greenville. Classroom should surround the collaboration area to support each grade-level sense of community. So they saw lots of varieties of how classroom pods could be laid out on their tours and they really liked when classrooms looked across the way at each other for the sense of community that it created. Staff satellite work copy space should be centrally located at the classroom so that all of that demand is not on the main entry. The following spaces should have direct access to natural daylight. And I'll say this is an including but not limited to list because wherever possible they're looking for it. Cafeteria, classrooms, gym, media center, main office, especially reception and the principal's office, art, and the teacher's lounge. Kindergarten, first grade, and the DCD center-based classroom should be located in an area with less traffic. Student services should be centrally located and teamed together and that these spaces need to support privacy. Adequately distributing bathrooms, a hot topic. The gym, just an acknowledgement, the gym will be used for a variety of functions, both during and outside of the school day. We should be able to subdivide the gym into multiple spaces. Students not sharing lockers. Specialist spaces, art, gym, music, and band should be near each other with adequate circulation. So an acknowledgement that students usually have them one after the other in their schedule. So not going across the building to get to them, but not having traffic jams, which is something they currently struggle with. A relationship between the flexible labs and art wants to be supported. Teacher's lounge being near the cafeteria and an opportunity for hand washing near the cafeteria for right before our lunch function. So those statements after taking the tours probably took up our first three, close to our first three meetings. So we spent a lot of time talking about how things should function before we ever draw a diagram, because we want the diagram to be close to right. So all of these things help set parameters for us. So just a couple of meetings ago, we started looking at diagrams. We actually have a meeting tomorrow to talk about a couple more details. But if we get to the schematic diagrams, so I'll say that the building is in a more completed state than the site. So the core planning group, I'll just say, their relationship to the site design is really to help us understand the relationship of parent and bus drop-off, maybe how the schedule works for access to playground or fields. But we have quite a bit of work yet to do in terms of engineering, working with the city on requirements, currently doing a traffic study that's underway, getting a geotechnical survey and borings underway. So there's lots yet to learn about the site. But I'll say the building here is shown in white. The current parking lot between existing Greenville and new Greenville is proposed to just be restripped. So you have buses lining up along this curb line here to go to new Greenville or existing Greenville. We can restripe this lot so that those buses are now along this curb line, so they won't be needed anymore here. Main entry for the building being centrally located for both bus drop-off and parent drop-off. So providing parent and staff parking, visitor parking here, staff parking for both buildings in the center lot, and no change to the existing Greenville drop-off area. It's important to note that the receiving is planned to be at the back, north of part of the building to have some, I'll say, efficiency with the way the receiving works at current Greenville. So right now your truck's back up into receiving like this and we'll be able to do the same thing this way, while leaving some space here for play. So the intent is to have this blacktop area returned to grass. But like I said, we're still working through a lot with engineering. The building diagram. So these relationships are what those criteria statements we're speaking to in a graphic form. So I'll walk you through it. We've got our main office here in this goldenrod color. That's the main entry, the only entry that's open when school starts. People have to come into the main office to be checked in before they can get into the rest of the building. The specialist spaces and those other spaces that are used regularly in the evening, cafeteria, gym, music, and then upstairs right above music is art, you'll see in a moment, all located on this side of the building so that the classrooms can be secured from them. Having an opportunity to come in, a small waiting area for families, bathrooms that are accessible both for hand washing before going to lunch or to serve for a weekend tournament of some kind. Our back-of-house support spaces like receiving and mechanical being directly adjacent to the kitchen and having appropriate space for our serving lines to move through before they come take a seat at their lunch table. And then we encounter our first opportunity for a lockdown line. So those are shown in these dashed lines here. So there's one scenario the core planning group worked through of just having the cafeteria and kitchen available for nighttime use and being able to secure off the rest of the building. So that's our first opportunity. And then we enter the learning space proper. So our centralized media center that's the heart of the school with centralized access to all classroom pods that does have the ability to be locked off here. Our specialist classes here of music and art above, our media teaching space and our media storage, staircases here and here to the upper level. And then very similarly designed classroom pods. So we've shown kindergarten, first grade, second grade, each with a staircase required by code at the end of their classroom tower. You can see dashed lines at the ends of the classroom pods show possibility for future expansion. So master planning another classroom if ever needed onto each classroom pod. And then another opportunity for lockdown. So if you wanted to have the media center and some of these specialist spaces open at night, but not all of your classrooms, again, you could seal off the classroom pods here, here, and here. Centrally located features, as you saw in the criteria, are some of your student services and restrooms, collaboration spaces, conference rooms, that staff work copy room. So that's what we see on the main level diagram. And then the upper level diagram, the classroom pods are very, very similar in design. One change you'll note is that the fourth and fifth grade are planned to only have four classrooms per each grade per the referendum. And that group has made a decision or a choice at this time to pursue lockers outside their classrooms. So you can see a small locker pod for fourth and fifth grade shown here. More of those centrally located student services, EL, title, a collection of small conference rooms, centrally located bathrooms, two sets of bathrooms here. Art and our flex labs directly above the media center. And then our mechanical space, so looking to plan for interior air handlers of this building, centrally located to serve the gym, commons, and the classroom wing. And again, showing that potential expansion at the end of the towers. And I should have indicated on the previous plan, but the little dashed, they're a little hard to see in here, but the little dashed arrows are showing areas where a lot of natural light might come in the building. So the shape is mostly related to the strong desire for the core planning group, for everybody to have access to that. So when you have a big square building like the way Greenville is now, it's challenging to get daylight to the center. So that's what the perimeter is trying to get, is everybody getting some access to the sun. So in terms of next steps for Bridgewater, in March we will continue user groups and then roll right into construction documents. And then for New Greenville, we are planning to start those user groups, which will be a very long list of meetings. So we'll have one with first grade, second grade, you know, all the grades, music, art, gym, the main office, the kitchen. All of those spaces will each have their own probably hour to hour and a half meeting and might need two or three rounds of those meetings. So we'll start then in late March with the intent of finishing those up in April so that we can start working on construction documents. So I know that was a lot for me to go through. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions about New Greenville or process in general.
It appears in looking at the schematic design diagram that the expansion on the south is going to drop in on top of the parent drop-off spot.
Yeah, we're working on the shape of the parking lot. I think once we get our traffic study, we'll be able to work out exactly how much drop-off length we need. And parking lot, luckily you can make any shape, probably you've seen a lot of funny-shaped parking lots. So we're showing that intent right now with the understanding the parking lot probably going to change a lot. But yes, the group noticed that last time too. Felt disingenuous to change it on them, so I figured I'd just show it this way. Yeah.
So I had one comment before I had a question. And the comment is just, I was going to comment on, with this large group, what a wonderful job Sal did of getting people's input and keeping us on task and I just, and getting the guiding principles before even seeing anything about a building and then bringing us to all those buildings and then plus having additional examples so that people felt like they had enough information to respond, which I thought was really great.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. It's kind of a question and kind of a comment. One of the things we talked about is if we had bubble classes and flipping. And so.
Oh, sure.
In the lower level, it's easy to see that and it's not as easy for me to see in the upper level. So if you could remind me in the upper level, but maybe explain to board members, because we were talking about trying to keep, even though the idea of these classroom pods is really would both build community, but we want to be flexible for changes in student populations.
Absolutely. So the discussion there was what if one year we have six first, six classes of first grade, what are we going to do about that? So the design of the classroom pod is very specifically done so that this classroom here, so the second grade classroom could relate to either second grade or to first grade. So it sticks a little bit into its adjacent classroom pods so that you have that flexibility from pod to pod. And then a couple other features about the classroom pods, there's an intent to have a grade-level storage room, so you see a small S there, and a dedicated, I'll call it a single-stall bathroom in every classroom pod, whether that be for staff or student use, more policy than anything. And then classrooms surrounding that flexible learning area. So on this level, we have five classrooms around a pod. You were indicating that on upstairs, it's not as easy to see. So if you remember at our last core planning meeting, we had shown lockers in this location here and then classrooms here and here. The fourth and fifth grade teams felt that the lockers needed to be in their immediate area for supervision. So this classroom right here would be able to flip and here, but it's only a half-size classroom right now. This title room right here could be converted to flip. But I think it's also less likely at your fourth and fifth grade that you reach the class sizes to need it. I don't know if there are other comments on that. So we're still working through those locker locations quite a bit. Was it definitely a hot topic on the group?
Yeah, I think the locker locations, the locker locations, there has been, I think we've been going around a little bit on that because there's clear advantages to having the lockers inside the classrooms, but there's also the desire, especially at the fifth grade level, to start preparing students for their middle school experience where they do have locker bays and that kind of thing. So there's been a little bit of vacillation and we'll see tomorrow where we land at.
So that is the topic for tomorrow, as well as the exact final distribution of the students and special services. So we landed a little bit last time on who has to be on main level and who can be on upper level. We've got some discussion yet to have on that. So ran out of time last time. Yeah.
I have several questions.
Sure.
So do you envision the height of the school being consistent across the hallway?
Sure. So that'll be one exciting thing we show the core planning group tomorrow is what we call a massing diagram. So it'll show what's intended to be one-story, two-story, one and a half. In most elementary schools, the gym's the tallest thing you've got. I imagine we're designing around a competition high school gym, which means 25 feet clear for volleyball. So that usually dictates that that's the tallest thing you've got. Obviously, all of this over here is going to be two-story. So the media center's intended to have a little bit of a double-height feature to it, but all of this being two-story. The office right now is shown as being a single-story space, the cafeteria, excuse me, being like a story and a half, so one and a half stories, which they saw at Jackson and Rosa Parks and Mankato. So having a little taller than normal media center, probably not totally two-story. And then currently showing single-story for the mechanical space and receiving, but still working on that a little bit. But trying to be as dense as possible, given that you have a, it's a tight site and I know preservation of green space is really important. So we're stacking as much as possible that makes sense.
Well, one of the questions we have gotten asked about the high school is why don't, if we want a bigger high school, why don't we expand up?
Yeah.
So now I want to ask you that question. I know you have little ends that could be expanded on, but if we want a bigger school in 40 years, is what, what would we have to do for people to be able to expand?
To expand up? Certainly. So people often talk about it. Usually codes change between the time you decide to do that, even if you master plan for now and then. So there are buildings that were, I'll say in the 90s, that were master planned to be added on to vertically, but now structural codes have changed. So the footings and foundations aren't big enough and the columns aren't big enough. So what that means is usually either tearing those things out and starting over or building a new superstructure over the building. So that can be limiting. You can master plan for that. It means you essentially make the roof a floor. So you plan for it like it's a floor and then you just put a roof membrane on top of it. It can add cost. I will say, I don't know of many three-story elementary schools that people appreciate. There's some, I'll call it more urban schools that certainly have three stories, but most try to get away from it for some of their younger students. So it's certainly possible. It's just a matter of, I'll call it risk management of spending the money now and hoping code doesn't change in the future. So I don't know if I answered your question well.
No, that's, that's actually very helpful. I was just thinking about that. And then other questions I have is, is there an elevator?
Yes. So that was a topic last time. We talked about two locations. The location we're currently showing is right here. So if I go to main level, it'd be right on the other side of the lockdown line. So you'd come in and go up right here and then you get to the same spot right here on upper level. That location provides access to some of these flex labs and the art room space, as well as being very centrally located for our special education students. And we usually try to encourage people to locate elevators near staircases so that students with disabilities don't have a fundamentally different experience. So if their peers are going to take the stairs, it's not on the other side of the building to take the elevator. So try to be pretty centrally located.
Another question I have is, with the two music rooms, are they going to have a divider that can open or are they going to be two music rooms just next to each other?
That's a good question. I don't know yet.
Okay. So.
I think when we talked to the music team, the only thing I'll say about dividers is they can be somewhat acoustically challenging. I mean, I'm sure everybody's been in a subdivided gym of you do your best, but you can usually still hear each other. So it's kind of a, it'll be a balance of is that important for day-to-day function over acoustics? So we'll meet with your music teachers certainly quite a bit about that.
Part of the user group process when that kind of determination is made.
I could see how it would go both ways.
It does go a little both ways.
But it's nice to have the larger room.
We did talk about, I think there's a desire for these two flex labs to have some operability between them so you have a space that can become a double classroom, at least somewhere in the building. That's a checkout space, but great question.
Another question I have is, at Rosa Parks, they had storage underneath their stairways.
Yes. Yes.
Are you thinking of anything like that here?
Yeah, I think we're going to have to have some storage underneath, oops, I meant to do the, this, um, underneath some of these staircases, certainly. Um, so there's lots of things to be added, like janitorial closets and data and electrical closets and things of that nature, so, um, usually those spaces are great opportunities for that, um, and sneaking in a little bit of storage, so, um, get into that next level of detail, like right about now.
Well, I, I'm a promoter of storage space, so that's why I ask.
You've got some champions on the group too, don't worry.
Um, so, then, when the kids come in the door in the morning, are they coming into the cafeteria?
So I think, um, the design offers the flexibility of coming in through the main entry or the cafeteria, that'll be a little bit of an operational question. Um, we will certainly need a second exit out of the cafeteria by code, so whether you choose to use that as a bus entrance, um, or you really encourage all traffic to come through the main entrance, both would be possible. Um, I think the site design will inform that a little bit, um, but I don't know if there are other comments on that.
I just don't think we're quite there yet.
Yeah, still working on where doors might go to. We've been, we've been juggling pieces quite a bit, but we're starting to land.
Are there exits at the bottom base of the stairwells?
Yeah, so, um, general rule of thumb is that you need two ways out of a space at any given time. So if a student were to come out of this space and there were, um, a fire emergency right here, they have to be able to go the other direction. So that's why we have to have stair towers at the end of these and then there will be a door direct outside. Um, and we can work out if that's, you know, alarmed and exit only, or, um, maybe there's card readers, so, so staff can choose to use them, but yeah, we'll have to have them. And we'll probably have to have an exit door right here too, to have two ways out of this space, to go that way and to go that way.
I have another question, but we're getting to the end.
I don't know.
Noel has a question, so if we could just move to Noel, and then we'll come back. Go ahead, Noel.
Dr. Hillman, what enrollment did we project for this building?
It's slated for 600 students.
My concern is if we were to design a third story for it, we would compromising the, what we recommend as enrollment at 600 students, as well as, we'd probably increase the needs for additional parking, uh, which is a pretty compressed site already. And it may mean that it would be appropriate with the expansion of the city to set another elementary school somewhere.
Yeah, and then you're, you're doing, when you, when you are at this point, we are, I, I gave the charge to the committee at the first meeting to realize that they're looking at something that is really a 75-year investment. And I think that as we look at having three neighborhood elementary schools, all with the capacity of around 600 students, you know, we're not even close to that complete capacity yet, we're a few hundred away. There's some other tools that we can use to balance elementaries over those seven decades. And again, I think, uh, you raise a fair point, Noel, that in that, while I would love to say that Sibley will last another 75 years, I'm relatively sure that, you know, Sibley would be the next elementary in a couple of decades to be looked at, and so there's another opportunity, given space for the community to make some decisions at that point. Um, so I think that there's a number of ways. We know that when we, as Amy pointed out, when we looked at, uh, proposing, uh, some pieces here at the high school, one of the questions that was asked during the 2017 campaign was the ability to go up. And of course, the building was not designed for that, except for save one small space in the middle of the building. And I think Sal makes a very good point in terms of, if we were to try to design it by today's standards, we would be, uh, putting expense into an area that would not be being used. We wouldn't be using that bill, that area, and we'd be banking on the fact that there aren't any code changes, uh, in that time. And I think that when we think about the money that's been entrusted to us and wanting to put as much into it, you know, into the instructional space as possible, we do have some spaces where we can expand on the fringes of the building, um, while making sure that we keep that investment, uh, within the current structure as opposed to thinking about that third story. I, I do agree that I think you'll see some secondary buildings where a third story is very valid, um, but I do think that the trend is, um, two stories or less, you know, for elementary schools, and just about the number of students. It's certainly something we can explore, but I think it comes back to, where do we want to put the dollars that the public has entrusted us? Do we want to put it into something that we aren't sure exactly how that might play out down the line, or some things that we know will have some value, at least in the first, uh, half of the life of the building?
I think that's it, all of those are great points, and we sometimes call those elements, um, core capacity, so things like width of hallways, amount of parking, cafeteria, kitchen size. So you can't just add classrooms to a building without expanding its core capacity too, so it's a comp- it's more complicated issue than just adding on the classrooms.
Well, actually you can, because we've done it several times, and they would point us to Sibley, you know, or when, in a few months, we'll be talking about that addition, and we have a cafeteria built for 200 kids, right? So I mean, we, we've, we've shown you can do it, it's not ideal, but.
We'll, we'll be back in April to talk about that one. Yeah.
Yeah, I opened up the original Greenville in, uh, fourth grade, so I went there fourth, fifth, and sixth, so I mean, I pop back in my mind, I spent a lot of time, obviously, know that building well, and, and the playground, I mean, that's what, when I look at this, what's the playground going to be?
Absolutely. Um, so I know everybody values your playground quite a bit, I can't see it going anywhere. Um, discussion right now about, uh, new playground location. So the criteria we have from the group so far is that, um, the new playground should be on the same side of the building as the fields. So I'm going to quick scoot back this way. So we know you've got, um, a larger expansive green space here, so I think that's going to dictate the playground somewhere on the north side of the building, which again points the idea that the site plan's not totally worked out yet, because I think the building might have to move a little south, or rotate a little bit, or something like that to make space for that. Um, so I know that's a valuable even neighborhood asset, so I imagine, um, the playground will stay as is, uh, maybe some expanded play space, but still under discussion. We were just talking about the budget just the other day, how big it can be.
Stay as is, I mean, all those kids that are coming out, they'll go way over there to play in the playground, or?
Uh, no, sorry, I should, uh, clarify, um, an intent for a new playground. I don't think we're going to go take that playground just to take it down though, because I think it's a valuable asset.
No, it'll be used by the early child, remember that the current building is staying there, remember we planned to have, uh, you know, a, our, our childcare center moving there with some possible expansion, our preschool there, and so there's going to be some, a need for the playground for those children. So, the playground, which is, it is one of the most valued assets in the district, it will continue to be used at the early childhood center, and then a new playground for the, uh, brand-new K5 building.
How do the students get, uh, that walker bike, get from the north side or the west side, and I think the south side of the, coming in from the south, they cross over to the west. It looks like they would have to cross the, um, driveway of the buses, and so is it possible to go to the north where the receiving isn't, put like a sidewalk there and loop around?
Yeah, absolutely. So I think we've talked about a couple neighborhood spurs here, and then there's one a little bit out of view here that are important, um, that we'll want to get a sidewalk to the building. Um, we've been talking about, this is the front lawn of the building, so making sure that there's, um, plenty of space for pedestrians and bicyclists to store their bikes. I also think the sidewalks might want to come this way and maybe go around the parking lot, so we've still got a little bit of that yet to do. Um, I think people coming from the west and south, we're going to have to figure out how to get them safely to the front door, because there's, um, quite a few existing curb cuts, so we'll have to figure out a path for them. Um, that's not too circuitous, because if we say they have to do this, we all know they're not going to, they're going to cut across. So I think, um, this path we're still working on, um, this one, we know we're going to have a swooping sidewalk, and then making sure to connect to these valued assets to the north too. So there's certainly, I, I've talked a little bit about the site plan, but, um, we're working with the city on where exactly we're going to be permitted to put this curb cut. Um, they're going to do, there's a traffic study ongoing to understand your peak times in the morning and afternoon, and that'll help us generate how much, um, queuing and stacking space we need for parent drop-offs, so it doesn't back up onto the road, and how much parking will be required, so, um, when I say it's the most malleable part of the design, that's why, we're still working through that.
Okay, you already answered one of my questions, which is about the access from the east there, because as it is, it would have to cut across the parking lot, but you just answered that, so.
Yep. That's actually the existing sidewalk underneath, and we're kind of drawing on top.
So, one of the things that Dr. Hillman always reminds us of is that Longfellow, Longfellow School is our most energy-efficient, because it's basically built like a Kleenex box. Um, and I really like the look of this, the footprint of it, and, I mean, it's going to look really cool on Google Maps and everything. I'm just wondering if the kind of, the fact that it's not so compact will have energy efficiency impacts? Or, as opposed to having something that's more compact, because you have a lot of, a lot more surface, I guess, to the outside?
Sure, you're absolutely right. The most, I'll call it efficient shape is a square, because it has the least amount of surface area. It's really challenging to get the center of that square to have daylight, which is kind of evidenced by current Greenville. Um, energy codes now are, um, quite restrictive and progressive, so a new energy code was just adopted last year by Minnesota, so, um, we're going to be required to do a, what's called an R13 in all of the walls, um, which I'm sure far exceeds, um, any of the buildings you already have, and an R30 on the roof. Um, so energy codes are really pushing towards energy efficiency, and then we're working with the project oversight committee on the design of the mechanical system to balance with that. Um, so do you want to pay maybe a little bit for a little bit more insulated glass to save on your mechanical system? So there will be some of those balances that we're working through. So yes, additional perimeter or surface area does, um, relate to the efficiency, but we can design the system to balance with that and the, how much insulation and things like that, so.
And I can just take, that's the first time that I think you've really heard about project oversight. We've included in the construction updates, just to be clear, we have, you've seen we have a poor planning team for each project, then the project oversight team includes board members, Sheriff Pritchard and Noel, and then involves Val Mertstorff, myself, it involves Jim Colseth, uh, it involves Aneet Ozzy as part of our team, and Sal and Josh and some other members of both WOLD and from Knutson. And again, this is a group that's trying to coordinate some of these details across all of the projects. Remember, we have five projects as part of the referendum, so we are looking to try to coordinate some of those things, so there's some similarities and some consistency in some of the approaches across all of the projects.
Yeah, I should have mentioned that before, sorry about that. And we are working with Jim and his team on building standards too, so on a parallel track of expectations of systems and what types of floor have and haven't worked well for you, and all those types of things too. Yeah.
I just had one more question.
Yes.
Um, and going, going back to the guideline that mentioned that there should be a space for community services stuff?
Sure.
And I didn't see it.
Sure, so we are working through that right now. Um, Sam, the principal had a wonderful idea of somewhere near the nurse, um, co-locating, um, a small kind of drop-in clinic space that might be able to be used by different services, um, and trying to find a space near the main office or near that main entry, um, for a combined, um, clothing and food storage. So I think somewhere near the main entry is where it wants to land, um, and trying to figure out the hours that that might be used, so people can access it without going through the main office. So I think somewhere in that golden rod L shape is probably where it lands, but, um, there's a little bit of a family waiting space here, that's what this blue, um, kind of bean-shaped area is, so that might be a nice waiting space for those who are waiting to see, um, someone at the clinic, but. It was kind of a late-developed criteria that we're still working through, because it wasn't a program space, but I think we'll be able to accommodate it. Yeah.
Just, when you mentioned the bean-shaped space, and you've got another one that's a breakout area on the second floor, I'm just wondering, are those enclosed, are they open, what exactly is in that kind of blob?
Oh, uh, meant to be open, so then, also for the cafeteria, I think I confused the corridor blast time too, I think the cafeteria will likely not have four walls around it, it might have a, um, a wide expansive entry similar to the Bridgewater, where it's semi-enclosed, but then there's a large entry. So that's mostly, um, and representative of something they saw in the tours at McKinley in Owatonna, right, when you walked in, there was a space to welcome people, have people wait, um, for weekend tournaments, have somewhere to go, so just a small, um, I'll call it a family waiting area or living room, but not intended to be an enclosed box. Yeah.
And then also the, um, the flex area in front of the media center, is that enclosed or open?
Uh, great question, so we worked through this a little bit with the group. Um, the intent is for some aspects of the media center to be locked up, so the media teaching space and the, um, media support and storage, as well as the books collection being able to be secured at night, um, while what we're calling the media living room or the media hub being more open and flowing and, um, looking more like a flexible learning area. So I, and we're still working through the design a little bit, but the intent is that this part might be open, but be able to be locked down right here, so your assets could be secured, but some of that shared flex space would be open, but.
Thanks.
Of course.
So the, the gym will be open for like after-school programs, can the rest of the school be, um, doored off?
Yeah, so I think we're going to have a couple areas to lock up, so there's one right here, so you could get to just bathrooms and the gym. Um, and then there's another opportunity to lock off at the classroom tower, I'll call it the classroom tower entries, so you could get to the specialist spaces in the media center without getting to the classrooms, so I think that's one scenario, and then another scenario is letting people a little bit further in, but not into the classrooms. And then of course, you can always lock down at the classroom level too, you know, lock doors, but.
Because these classrooms will have doors.
Right. It's a high priority, and walls.
All right, great question, so.
Any other questions about process? Just wanted, I, I don't know if I got much time to do it, but I wanted to thank very much the core planning team. Um, we've had great groups for both projects, lots of discussion, um, they were getting sick of talking and wanting us to draw, but that's usually a good sign, um, and we're excited to see them all tomorrow.
And again, reiterate what Julie, Ellen said before, that, you know, we've just been really thrilled with the collaborative spirit that you've led these meetings, really making sure people's voices are heard, and then being also transparent about what we can do and what we cannot do, because there are limitations, and again, we're at a stage where it is still somewhat conceptual, but, uh, I just really want to thank WOLD for their work in terms of helping facilitate what I think is exactly what you pitched to us when we interviewed you, so thank you for your work.
Thank you.
And again, reiterate the thanks to the core 30-some member, Greenville Park Core Planning Team, and, you know, another 20 people at Bridgewater, and so really appreciate the work that people have done on that.
Yes, it's really, it's been excellent, and, and again, having been in on the presentation, you really followed through on, on what you had said the process would look like, and it's just really been excellent.
Thank you. No other questions, we'll see you soon.
Excellent.
Did you have another question?
Hi, it's a, it's a broad one. I know you've designed many schools, and I'm just wondering, what excites you about this school?
What excites me about this school? I think you guys are thinking about the future more than people often do, thinking about a master plan for how school might look 50 years from now, it can be tempting to think about current programming, and sometimes you have to lift people out of their current pedagogy and remind them of that, and I think your, your constituents have it already right there at the forefront of their mind. Um, what else? You've got incredible participation. Sometimes we have groups of 12 to 15, it's tough to get everybody there, especially week after week meetings, so I think there's a lot of passion. Um, and the project was well-planned from the beginning, so we're not starting from a difficult spot. Um, it's got plenty of square footage allocated, and I think we're going to be able to achieve all of your dreams. We're, you know, doing a lot of balancing of if this, then that, um, but not a lot of no has had to be said yet, or say the budget can't support that, which, so, started from a great spot.
Thank you.
Yeah. Of course. Thank you, have a good evening.
All right, so we'll go on to our second item, oh, I'm sorry, our second item for discussion is, um, we have Joel, Principal Joel Lear, here to provide, um, an update on buildings, the high school buildings flex hour, which when Joel was here had indicated the high school buildings flex hour, which when Joel was here had indicated that they were going to conduct these surveys, so we thank you for coming back and sharing those with us.
Yeah, absolutely, and thank you for having me. As you remember, this is kind of the third in a, well, I shouldn't say a three-part series, it may just be an ongoing series of updates, information about the flex period that began with a pilot last spring, and then started in earnest in the fall. And the survey results represent student and staff responses essentially right around semester time, a little bit prior to semester time, which with all the snow days still feels like it's semester time. But this first section is 1,060 student responses. I do want to draw your attention to the fact that the survey, because of some other kind of peripheral research that one of our staff members was doing, examined it through the lens, as you know, one of the four purposes of our flex period was to look at reducing stress and anxiety for students and reducing the hectic rat race feel of the school day. And so you'll see that every other chart is a representation of all of the student responses. Every other chart then is representative of those students that identified with the idea of being distressed or having stress three or more times a week. And so we wanted to kind of separate out how those two groups looked, simply because of the pieces that were specific to student social emotional health, the piece of de-stressing their lives was a critical piece for moving forward with the flex period itself. So wanted to draw your attention to that. Also quickly, because of the sample size obviously is different for the group that indicated that they feel some distress or stress. If you look at the bar graphs, the chart on the left is important to the representation of the actual numbers. So as we move through this, some of the charts would be misleading if you assume that everything on the left is always the same. So obviously with an N of over 1,000 and an N of 600, those charts are going to adjust the chart maker, depending upon what the total number of respondents for those are. So don't let that throw you. And then the third is, while most of the charts represented an agree/disagree, two-choice option, there were actually three choices, and neutral was always available to students. Neutral was represented only in those charts where neutral seemed to be a significant response among the students. Most of the time, they felt strongly one way or another. And so that is why there's a, there was a chart a little ways in, you'll suddenly notice there's a neutral component. There was one in each of them, but it was a negligible number of respondents, except in the case or cases where those are represented. So I will kind of move through these fairly rapidly, but just kind of really talking through some of the general themes. And again, these questions come out of the inspiration for the flex period in the first place. So looking at the four objectives, building and fostering relationships, creating more balance, less hectic day, an opportunity to implement college and career readiness, and then equity and access of academic supports. And so the questions all kind of focus around how are we doing after a semester in those particular areas? So you'll notice it's dramatic in terms of students feeling that their day is more balanced with the flex period, and also including those students who feel, who talk about feeling distressed, again, three or more times a week. And so again, I just want to draw your attention, you did a really nice job with the red.
The green in the middle, click there.
Oh, thank you. So here, as you see with the distress number, the high point on the chart is 125 respondents, here it's 250. So just want to again, draw your attention to that. As we move through here, there's a particular pair of slides where it looks like the number of people disagreeing is greater in the smaller N, and that's why. So, so flex period helps balance my day, flex period helps reduce my stress, and you can see disaggregated by grade level, a significant percentage of students across the four grades explaining that it does indeed reduce their stress to have that additional period in the middle. The piece that, it's interesting, as we move through this, a number of people talk about an extra hour in the day, in students and staff alike. And what I find fascinating about that is that they're looking at lunch almost as if it didn't exist before, but because it's attached to another essentially 28 to 30-minute period where that full block of time, I think they see the opportunity to eat and to relax in one block feels exponentially larger than 30 additional minutes. So I really think it's significant to point out that some of these features of the period or byproducts of the period, the flex period, are the result of really taking three minutes from each class period, creating that additional 30 minutes attached to lunch, which just reduces the stress of lunch as well as other components of the day. So all reduces my stress. Here's what I talked about, that it looks like actually more people disagree with this question on the second chart, which is true among that N. So of the 125, well, it's not 125 respondents, but that's the max on the left-hand side. Feeling flex is overall beneficial, and again, predominant, dominant number of people saying that indeed it is beneficial to them, and for a multitude of reasons that you'll see in a chart coming up here shortly. Among those who feel distressed three or more times a week, again, feeling that it is beneficial. And obviously, there are going to be pieces of the question of stress and anxiety in our students that may be peripheral to the school setting, so that we can, we can provide perhaps in-house a response to a situation that they're bringing from outside of the school, I think is important as well. So it's not just stress being reduced within the confines of our building, or being reduced by something we are causing inadvertently, but also things that students are bringing in from the outside. Flex helps me connect with teachers. Now, this again is a relational question, this is not an academic question, the academic question is coming, so this is essentially saying an opportunity to get to know staff on a more relational level. So again, all grades predominantly more agree than disagree, and also among the distress, and this is where the distress piece, the students who report distress, where there's the least amount of, I guess, positive response in terms of what we're trying to accomplish. This will become actually a focus as we move forward with flex period, to talk about how are we identifying those students, and then subsequently, how are we interacting with them? Those of you that have been here a while remember our Student Connection checklist, which was really about making connections with students during the confines of the regular school day. And so we really see this as evidence that particularly for those students who are self-reporting stress, that we're actively pursuing them. The trick, of course, is, we want the data to be, you know, we don't want students to feel like we're gathering this data so that we can then just immediately follow up with them, but we do see this as reason to consider a response for those students. Flex helps me to connect with other students. A predominant number of the students talked about one of the major positives, an opportunity to spend a little more time with their classmates and their friends. This would include, and we talked about this in the pilot, but it builds on itself in that, if you remember, our former lunch periods were assigned, now we just have a massive time where you can eat with everybody and anybody. So, and as much as adults, we think, really, that can be a stress, it's a stress. And so having removed that from some students' lives, the idea of who am I going to eat with, will I have my friends in my lunch period, has been a really significant positive change for many, many of our students. And you see that wander the building at any point during flex, this is the one you'll see most, is kids have an opportunity to interact with one another. And also again, with students reporting stress, feeling the same way. Flex helps me to, or helps me to get help with my schoolwork, and again, we're pleased with that, there will be a couple of points of emphasis later here in a few minutes that I'll touch on that a little more specifically. But you do see a lot of students doing their homework, and most of the students you talk to that are doing their homework, which may seem, as I've talked about before, a little counterintuitive to the idea of relaxation and de-stressing, what you, we're actually doing is de-stressing some other point in their day that wouldn't have been distressed otherwise. So a lot of kids getting their homework, at least part of their homework done. And then again, students who are, have some form of anxiety or stress, a little more balanced in terms of agree/disagree, but again, still a number of those getting help. And we're looking at strategies, and again, we'll touch base on this a little bit later with a couple of slides, but looking at ways to be more purposeful about making sure that students are accessing those academic supports and those homework completion opportunities, and maybe even working a little bit toward gentle coercion in situations where we feel that it's going to be in the best interest of the student's academic health. I really appreciate this one, more ready for afternoon classes. Again, just to remind you, the structure is four class periods, and then we have the flex period, and then class periods five, six, and seven. So on our old model, a student who had lunch 4A would go to classes one, two, and three, have lunch, and then have four, five, six, and seven, with only a 25-minute break in between. So that hour and then the three classes is really showing a positive change in terms of how students feel ready for their afternoon classes. Many of whom, in a correlated response, talked about physical activity being one of the main features that they pursue during that time period. I wouldn't want to get in the way of the dodgeball game if I were you, but it accomplishes some real positive things. And then again, the students demonstrating stress, similar answer to that question of afternoon classes. This was a question that I know that we have talked about. I was expecting quite frankly, a more dramatic disagree in terms of wanting to have, excuse me, yeah, disagree, wanting to have clubs and meetings and activities during the course of flex period, mainly because there was a particular week in the fall, excuse me, particular week in the fall when inadvertently, a number of seniors who were involved in certain activities were getting their senior graduation cap gown information. So some students ended up with CCR on a Tuesday, and then four essentially assigned periods. They were, it happened to be random, but they all occurred in the same week, and so it was kind of an inspiration for us to kind of take a step back and say, are we inadvertently really filling up time that we want to make sure students have open access to? So interestingly enough, we asked this question, and I would, but I would say, we asked the question on the heels of this particular event in the fall, and staff have been very kind of reactionary in a positive way, to saying, yeah, we don't want to do that, we want to make sure that we're keeping the four objectives at the forefront. So while there are some things that occur during flex period, I think that we've achieved a fairly decent balance to this point. Obviously, we'll survey the students again at the end of the second semester and determine whether or not that is true or not true. The other piece to consider too, in terms of the club activities, clubs and activities that meet during the flex period, is that to some extent, it's about equity of access as well. So instead of having things like district council, mayor's youth council functioning in the morning, when student, particular students can't get transportation to and from, or they can't stay after school for an activity or a club, it does provide students that don't have access otherwise to have access during the day. So there is a balance of those, and we're just gonna, we're going to continue to kind of monitor and be aware of that, because we do want the period to be, this sounds a little bit rhapsodic, but all things to all kids. And again, this one is a little more balanced, that is, in general, as many agree/disagree or we're neutral, and these again, were the students who were feeling a bit of distress at points during the week. So for those students reporting distress, and I need to get these numbers because I realize that we don't have a similar for the student population. So that 608 students who report, I'm really sorry, report feeling stressed three or more times a week, visiting with friends represents over half of the student response to that, to that question, what do they spend most of their flex period doing? And then 20% studying, just as a point of reference for the entire population. Oh, that's much better. 54% said visiting with friends, 21% studying or doing homework, and then 6.5% physical activity is compared to 3.4 on that chart. So fairly comparable numbers between the two groups. And again, one group is obviously embedded in the other. And again, these are when I'm feeling distressed. Now, the difference here is students who report feeling stress three or more times a week, this is students who are stressed during the flex. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So when they're feeling stress during the flex period, these are the activities that they choose. So again, that 40% of the students, and another 16% relaxing, doing an interest, spending time, just talking, getting a chance to decompress a little bit, which we know is obviously important. All right, with that, we'll move into the staff flex survey data. And, does it seem like I have a note that I wanted to, oh, nope, that's coming up. So again, overall assessment of flex, so this was again before semester break, five represents excellent, one represents not excellent, and as you can see, the lion's share of our staff are to the right of that likelihood scale. And again, 49 of our staff members responding to this particular question. Jim, would you remind me to talk about educational assistance when I, if I forget it? I'm hoping I can remember. Student input overwhelmingly supports a change, so if you remember, taking back to the last time I was here, we implemented a 10-20, 10-20 system, where students had 10 minutes to be on the move, and then 20 minutes to stay put. Bell would ring, they'd have another 10 minutes to be moving again, 20 minutes to stay put. Part of that was about, I think we wanted to have some sense of order and some sense of control with the period, rather than just having students meandering about. We'd also visited a school where the meandering about didn't work so well. So we took some of the ideas that we saw and went with that model to say, you've got 10 minutes to get to where you're going, and then you need to be there for 20 minutes. The unintended result of that, or the unintended consequence, was that students were actually beginning to get stressed about having to be someplace in a minute, and they were still spending nine minutes in the lunch line. Students were skipping lunch because they wanted to make sure they got to where they, where they wanted to spend their 20-minute period. Students weren't accessing academic supports because they just needed one math problem answered, and that didn't take 20 minutes, and so they didn't want to spend 30 minutes with Mr. or Mrs. X in the math department, when they only needed seven minutes of help. And so we heard from students, and students were, this particular question, we didn't ask the question of students, would you like to get rid of the 10-20? What we said was, what are some areas that you would like to see improvements? And of this, the thousand students that responded, just over 55% named that as their biggest area of interest and improvement. And so given that, so when I refer to overwhelming support, given that, we posed this question to staff, and almost 90% said, yeah, let's give it a try and see what happens. The interesting thing about it, I think that we, well, we reworked our supervisory grids, so we had more eyes in the spaces in between, and we also actually had more bodies in the hallways, or in the building during flex that are actually on supervisory assignments. The stunning result was something that looks very much like it did before, just everyone's a little more relaxed about that movement piece. So students who want to go get their lunch and don't feel the concern that they're going to be trapped in the cafeteria or in some other space can do that, but we found that most students were kind of where they wanted to be in the first place. I think we are seeing some increase, and we'll be able to confirm these numbers at the end of the quarter, but increased participation in the food service area, because that was one of the pieces that we wanted to make sure we considered with the reduction and the restriction of that period. But students have been, you know, we talked about how during a regular school day, we rely on students to make good decisions and behave in positive ways, because we're dramatically outnumbered. And we found that when we remove, well, we are, I mean, it's, we haven't told them, and so don't tell the students for sure. But what we have found is that when we remove this particular restriction, they remained that way, and knew what they needed to do. I think most recognize this period as an opportunity to better themselves in one way or another, academically, socially, actively, or what have you. So it's been a really good, positive change. We hope to see one of the byproducts being an increase in the use of our academic supports, because again, students I think felt they didn't want to get trapped in a place where they didn't need a full half-hour of support, and so now they can get their lunch, go get help with that three-minute math problem, go someplace else, and so on. So we are hoping that a number of aspects of our four goals and objectives will be picked. So if you've been offering academic support during flex, if students have been accessing it as intended, so again, this is before the change of the reduced 10-20, 10-20 structure, so 75% said yes or sometimes, and another, just under a quarter said that no, they weren't accessing it as intended. And like I said, we're hoping that those numbers will rise now as there's a little more freedom in space. This was an interesting question, so should students who are struggling or at risk of not passing be required to attend some form of, could be makeup work, homework, completion time, something during that flex period? And a number of our staff, and we dialogued about this in our staff meetings, and also in other forums, formal and informal, and you'll notice that this 43% is saying, yes, we believe that's true, but we also need to make sure that we honor and respect the piece about decreasing the clutter of their day, the stress of their day. So if we are taking a student who is behind, maybe habitually behind in their schoolwork, and removing their flex period day after day after day, then what we are doing is solving one problem and kind of exacerbating another. So I appreciated that staff wanted to honor that initial, one of the core objectives, but you can see that a number of staff were saying, yes, we'd be willing to try that within the confines of reason. Our academy staff has actually begun to do this in an informal way, and the results were staggering, mainly because the flex period is something the students really feel is a positive part of their school day, for a number of reasons. So if you are in a classroom when you are normally out and about with friends, it's an amazing motivator. And I don't say that lightly, because I don't intend it to be a commentary on discipline, it's more about that we want to make sure that students understand that just as much as the relational, social, and developmental piece of flex is important, that we also want to make sure we keep focused on the fact that one of the key pieces was to make sure that we had equitable access to academic supports. So again, this is staff question, for you, has flex created more balance in your day? And about 75% said yes. Some of the nuances to this question are going to be different. One of the things I mentioned was that we have more adults in supervisory assignments. What we did was we condensed some study halls during the day, so we actually have some staff who are doing multiple supervisions a week during flex, in exchange for an open period during a class period hour. What that allows us to do is that, so for every one of those, we gain four supervisors during the flex period a week. So we have a lot, a lot more adult bodies out and about in the building. That I think reduces that sense of, oh my goodness, I'm supervising this massive space, or I'm supervising these six hallways, or those types of things. space, or I'm supervising these six hallways, or those types of things. And also, there was, if you can imagine a flex period that creates some conflict, 99% of our conflict was around that question of, well, I want to be here, but you're telling me I'm stuck here. And so that interchange between staff and students was something that, obviously being removed now, I think we'll see this number change pretty significantly. Do you feel you've had an ability to build and foster relationships with students during flex? Again, half of the staff said yes, half of, or half of the other half. So a quarter said sometimes. And again, this piece, I think, as we've removed some of those conflicts and barriers, I think we'll see an increase there as well. Have you noticed a positive increase in the behaviors, attitudes? This was, I thought, interesting juxtaposed against the question that we asked the students because the students feel ready. The staff just don't perceive that readiness at quite the same level. They perceive it, but just not quite at the same level that students indicate that they feel that. So a couple of things that we talked about leading into that 10-20-10-20, one of the main focus points was, as we look at academic progress for students, how do we reinforce the message that one of the four main objectives was academic support during flex? So talking about personal invitations. So rather than announcing to my clients, hey, don't forget, I have academic support on Tuesday, to seek those specific students out and say, hey, you know what, on Tuesday, why don't you come? We'll work 10 minutes on this particular assignment and get things taken care of. And teachers are finding that that personal invitation goes a long way to get students to show up. And also, again, as I mentioned, talking about the possibility that at times we may say, you know what, you need to come make up this assignment because it's two weeks overdue. So leaving room for that. And now, again, as I mentioned throughout, the no restriction of student movement. The one piece about it, we still are indicating that your movement needs to be intentional. So wandering, unless you're working with a teacher who is on, I'd say this facetiously, but we, you know, if you're doing the walking laps, great. But it needs to be more than just simply meandering about, that there needs to be some intentionality to what you're doing during the day, hoping that those areas all improve.
EAs.
EAs, yes, thank you very much. So I wanted to draw your attention back to this one very briefly, if I can get to it. The 10-20-10-20 model. 87% of staff, teaching staff, indicated that they wanted to give this a try. 100% with an exclamation point following all the way off the side of the paper, came from educational assistants who were burying the brunt of that, no, you can't be there, no, you've got to stay here, no, you've got to do that, no, you've got to do this. And so they were very appreciative of that question being considered both by staff and educational assistants. And so I think they, their supervisory roles have, is in a much broader way allowing them to connect positively with kids, whereas before, it was a little more of the, really the no-you-can't people. And I say that because it wasn't intended to be that way, but it just worked out that way, simply because those general supervisory areas are typically where our ed assistants were located most of the time. So that has dramatically improved. So thank you, Kim, for that reminder. With that, I will open it up for any questions, comments.
Excellent. Thank you. We appreciate you coming back and sharing the survey results. And a thousand students, that's a really great, you know, response to the survey. So that was excellent to see the data around, you know, resulting from that many responses. So questions? Rob?
What I noticed in all the paragraphs is that the yellow line for the seniors was off, was always the lowest one for agree. So is something different needed for seniors?
That's a great question, you know, and we've talked about that, and mainly because, as you know, the seniors are the one group of students that get to leave during that period. What I would envision, and one of the things that I've talked about with our, my, well, with my administrative team, is doing a senior-specific survey and talking about, we wanted to kind of give them the sense of increased freedom and responsibility, but if in doing so, we are lessening the impact of what we hoped the flex period would be, so in other words, if they're, they're leaving campus and then going and doing, I'm just shooting off the top of my head here, but going and doing something that leads to increased stress, we want to know that so that we can kind of counter with some different programming. But our intent is to kind of pursue that with some follow-up questions to find out kind of why, what the specifics are behind why the seniors are lagging behind a little bit on that positivity. Great question.
Amy.
Thank you for putting this all together. It's fun to hear such positive things about the flex hour. I think it might be interesting to see these same statistics but as a percentage of the people who responded, because maybe the seniors have a lower raw number because fewer students responded who are seniors.
I see what you're saying.
And not that I'm asking you to go back and redo the whole thing, but it may actually affect, you might find out that across the board, it's 90% of the students in every class loves it.
Sure.
You know, it'd be interesting to compare it that way.
Ellen.
Thank you again for all the data. So I have two areas I was curious about, and it may be that it's just outside of this presentation. One was how the carry has come and talked to us about the different layers of support. And I know there's two different types of peer helpers, the academic and social-emotional.
Right.
And I wasn't sure if the flex hour was giving students more access to that, but because those are also peers and they want to have the flex hour, if it isn't as ideal. So that's the first question. And the second one is, your Part C, the CCR, if that's a different presentation, or if you can address that one.
My Part C?
Continued evaluation and examination of CCR. The last page you have.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, gotcha. Yeah, so great question about the students supporting students and our academic student coaches. They are not scheduled during that class period, or during that class period, during the flex period. We do have academic and social-emotional supports available in that setting during that hour. So we have promised fellows, educational assistance, carries available as well. So it's a staff room from both perspectives, but it's our adult staff during that time period. So there's that one. And then, right, so the, what we wanted to do with our evaluation of college and career readiness, and a number of students responded to the questions of strengths and areas of opportunity with comments about the college and career readiness. We really wanted a chance to kind of isolate that from a curricoter standpoint, that it is a little different in the sense that flex period was something that we kind of designed organically. CCR is really about responding to a direction that we need to prepare students in a better way for college and career. So we really wanted to kind of, to pull that out and really ask some pointed questions specifically about that. So we actually, in the intro material for the survey itself that we sent to students, we indicated that we'll have a separate survey piece for them related to CCR so they could focus specifically in on the flex period itself.
Excellent. So we'll really be interested in seeing the results of that survey.
You bet. Absolutely.
Rob?
I'm just curious about, like, about 4% of both stressed and non-stressed respondents report engaging in physical activity. So what are the options available for physical activity?
If I name them, Rob, you have to join them. No, I'm just kidding. We have, the lion's share of those students are lifting weights, doing activity in the gym. For the most part, they are really big into basketball. So they will do, and the basketball scene kind of happens organically, so they will do the, and the name of the game escapes me, but it's essentially a competition where they get in a line.
Lightning.
Thank you, lightning. And others are playing maybe a half-court game, others are just shooting baskets. The one where kids come out, you know, a little bit smoky is, not smoky, smoking. I should just stop. Let's just say they're really warm and red-faced when they come out of the wrestling room because they're playing dodgeball or bombardment. We do that three days a week. It is not for the faint of heart, but they're very softballs and the kids have learned to tone it down a little bit. There, Jeff Akoff talks about no headshots, but it's, we have a group of students, I think, that rely heavily on those opportunities. Just, and even if it's a matter of being in the gym and wandering around and shooting baskets very casually, those are the students that often report how much that helps them focus during the rest of the school day. So gymnasium, auxiliary gym, where they can do some weightlifting. And all of those activities are obviously supervised by adults. And then the wrestling room for dodgeball.
Because it seems like if you're in class all morning and then you are in class all afternoon, that actually this period of physical activity might actually be one of the more beneficial things. So I wonder if there's a way to find out what the correlation is between the people who participate in that and their focus in the afternoon, or, and then maybe encouraging more people than 4% to do these things.
Sure. Yeah, that's a great point.
I know in the fall, I witnessed a lot of kids playing frisbee too, on the green space. So if the snow ever melts, you might see.
We want it to melt slowly, though.
We might have to go to street hockey if we're waiting too much longer.
Other questions? Tom?
I agree with Rob and about physical activity. It's one of the most important things. In fact, I've been part of a book club where we read the book Distracted Minds about kids being on technology. And the number one thing that helps them is physical activity. Helps them to control and focus. So, you know, back when I went to school, we could come and go, we didn't have to stay at school. I walked home every day for lunch. I'd go one way. No, no, seriously. And we, you talked about our kids are supervisors here, people are always watching them. And does that cause stress? And how are kids ever going to learn to take care of themselves, to deal with the stress they have? If they're always structured, they always, you know, 10 minutes here, 20 minutes there, somebody's always watching you, and they can't leave the campus, can they go out during, when it's nice outside? Okay, so they can.
We have three locations that are, well, they're supervised. But yes, three locations on campus where they can outside.
Yeah. So, and does the flex hour count as teaching hours?
So we still have the 25-minute lunch period, you know, that's part of that. And then one of the things I'd like Joel to talk about, too, is a little bit about the micro electives that are part of the flex hour. So the flex hour includes a couple of pieces. It involves the traditional 25 minutes for lunch, which we used to spread out over a couple of different hours, which is now embedded within that. And then the remainder of the time would be what I would call micro elective, and then also some passing time. So the only part of the flex hour that we don't count toward instructional minutes is the 25 minutes of lunch because that is what we have officially as that. And then students do have a variety of choices. You've even heard Mr. Lehrer talk about that there are some options that sound a lot like a study hall, right? You know, there's some options that sound a lot like physical education class. I know, I'd like you to go through some of the other micro electives. I know there are some places where there's some music things happening, and there's some other kinds of activities that engage students in different ways. And so that's how we look at it. I have always looked at the flex as a mix, a fluid mix of lunch and a period of micro electives where students have what I would call hyper-choice in terms of what they have the opportunity to do. So would you just talk about a few of the other things, Joel? And I, I just want to also point out, Tom, I understand absolutely where you're coming from on the gradual release of responsibility for students. That would be, I think, the term we would use. We've had a little bit of discussion about whether seniors, you know, should have, moving forward, that ability to leave campus, you know, for the flex period, first part of the flex period, anyway. And, you know, students are going to graduate in June, and the next week, they're going to be in the real world where they have to be able to go and get back. And so we've talked about that a lot, but we also have to understand that, you know, we are also in an era where we are expected to provide quality supervision. Now, quality supervision doesn't mean that I'm looking at you every moment. It means that we at least have an adult in the vicinity because we know that when an adult is in the vicinity, kids, some kids feel safer, some other kids understand that they need to watch their behavior, make sure that they're being reasonable. And it is that really struggle that we have between what we know is probably a good thing for that gradual release of responsibility, to have a little bit less structure, a little bit less supervised method, which this really actually accomplishes that in a number of different ways. But at the same time, with the societal expectation that we are in charge of 1,400 children at this building during this entire day, it doesn't always square when we're trying to do that. But it is, we are responding to what we know is a good thing for kids, of course, and that gradual release of responsibility, while also making sure that we provide quality supervision, you know, to ensure the safety and the productivity of students. It is, it's a tough thing, Tom, but make sure you talk about micro elective.
I will. One of the things I just mentioned, too, what the flex period allows us to do, to your point, Tom, is students naturally cluster with those students with whom they are comfortable. So we actually have, I mean, Matt has actually talked about the idea of passive supervision, and I would describe, our flex period allows us to get about as close to that as we can because students who gather in a particular classroom typically are there because of common interests or common likes or the fact that they like each other. And so it does, in small ways, organic ways, the flex period, I think, allows us to back away a little bit. We don't have, you know, short of, I would say, like, the wrestling room, the, well, the wrestling room for dodgeball, for example, has to be an obviously active supervision. The weight room, for obvious reasons, has to be active supervision. But we have, we have settings where students can relax a little bit without feeling like they're under the, you know, the watchful eye of an adult. And sometimes it depends on the event. Matt talked about micro electives. I know I mentioned a presentation that our FIA teacher, Doug Davis, did last year during the pilot that had 90 kids crammed into a classroom. Mr. Johnson has a weekly seminar about fishing. So they'll watch instructional fishing videos and talk about techniques and those types of things. We do have, you know, within the confines of a gym, which on a given day might look like just organic play, which we also advocate for. The FIA teachers will design floor hockey and volleyball, badminton tournaments. So students are getting, you know, organized, just play, if you will, competitive play. So teachers, once a week, are required to have a, we call it interest offering, but essentially it's an opportunity for students to pursue something that is potentially curiosity or potentially something that they really want to delve in deeply. So we have, you know, students who do some, Jackie McKay offers a particular day where they have tea, and they'll talk about, talk about books. There are settings that present almost a little bit like a lounge in that, that's not really the micro class that, what did you call them again?
Micro electus.
Micro electus. That present that way, but it's, so every staff member, so if you think about the fact that we have 78 licensed staff, so during the course of the day, students have close to 80 opportunities to pursue those types of things that are a little more, a little more organized. They're relaxed, but they're organized and can be very instructional and enlightening in different ways.
Excellent. Amy?
With everybody talking about physical activity, it made me wonder how the different genders do, I mean, what percentage are boys and what percentage are girls involved with physical activities?
I would say that the gymnasium, so basketball, volleyball, those sports are a little more balanced. Dodgeball does tend toward the males in our building. Weightlifting, weightlifting is probably predominantly males, too, but there's a, there are days when it's more balanced than others. One thing I also should mention, too, granted, it's not what we typically think of as physical activity, but we have, you know, spaces in the technology and engineering area where students can be moving about, doing, you know, the, obviously, the woods lab, the autos lab, things like that. The robotics kids are working down there. So it's activity, not physical activity like we think of as getting the cardio up, but certainly students who might otherwise be in more classroom sit, academic settings, have an opportunity to be up and around, much like the evening robotics courses allowed them to do as a course that they wouldn't otherwise be able to access.
Any other questions? No?
Excellent presentation.
Thank you, sir.
I was, there were several places in your presentation where you made reference to the fact that the students have almost greater opportunity for self-discipline. And I think that's really good. That's really good. That's what part of growing up is, self-discipline. There's an opportunity that it'd be done in a structured but unmanaged area.
You bet.
And it's good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you, Joel.
Absolutely.
This was great, and thank you for your continual work and, you know, not only the pilots that you started and then, you know, working on it this year and the changes that you're making and continuing to review and make sure it's doing, you know, and achieving the objectives. So, thank you.
You bet.
And we look forward to when you do have the CCR survey and come back and show.
Very good. You bet.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay. So our last item for discussion and report, we have Kim Briskie, Director of Technology Services, is here to present more information, as we know, working on the student device leases. Just as a reminder, there was Kim's updated PowerPoint presentation in the table file. So if you want to be sure you have that, there's... in the table file. So, if you want to be sure you have that, that's great. Welcome, Kim. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you for having me. All of this talk about students and stress and a break in the day and physical activity, I could go on about those things. And now, and you know, we come talking typically about our purpose of supporting this, the whole student and all the things that are going on in our schools. And tonight, I come on a really nuts and bolts piece about actual devices. And so, I think Joel said he was on the third installment of how many he didn't know, but it sounds like he has a fourth installment now coming up with CCR. This would be, I guess, my second installment here, and we'll have a couple more to come. So, if you remember, I was here on January 28th, I believe, and that's when we were supposed to have had some student device presentations. And I showed this exact slide, except it didn't have things crossed out and rearranged, because mother nature has been that way, as we've heard this year already. So, the process here has been that we did survey our licensed staff. We did pull together this focus group to have some real conversations about what devices people would like to see in students' hands moving forward. We did some review of that feedback in December for the licensed staff. And then that 20, January 28th, we were supposed to see those presentations from CDWG on Chromebooks and from Apple on iPads. That didn't happen that day, as we didn't have school. It did happen on February 25th, which was another day that we didn't have school. But we did the presentations anyway, and got them, got them to run. And then we had just one week turnaround then to do another meeting and talk about some of the responses in our family survey, and some of what our needs are moving forward, as well as some feedback from those presentations. So, that's the input that I've pulled together. In the, in the board packet, I did include some links to that more data from the focus group, where you could, if you go to those, you can see some more complete information from that process as well. So, parent survey is now complete. We have a wealth of data from that survey, and we're working to roll out a student survey as we speak. So, again, that focus group had 36 members from all schools, had district services administrators. We got the feedback on the device presentations and on the surveys that we did with parents and with staff. As far as parent feedback goes, that survey was out for a period of a week and a day. It was sent to all families, K-12, a couple of times with a reminder. We asked for one response per family, so I'm not sure that people did or did not do that. But that's what I was hoping for, would be one response per family in the district. We got 607 total responses. We have 2,400 families in the district. So, if you're interested in the response, we're reading, it's about 25%. I asked for feedback from the family as a whole, so for all of the people in your household, some things that apply to everyone. And then I also asked a question that asked, in what grades do you have students attending the Northfield Schools? And it listed all of the options, K through 12. I didn't go into early childhood. But then, whatever you checked in that question, you got a separate page for the, for that age student. So, we have very specific to kindergarten through 12th grade, to look at what kinds of technology our students are using at home, what kinds of feedback parents have specific to that student's use of technology, to help inform our practices moving forward. So, this survey has a ton of information that we'll use going forward. I'll get to that in a little bit. Some of it's really easy to pare down to some of the things that we can understand, because I asked a few things that were actually checkbox kinds of questions. Most of it's open-ended in this one, though, because I did not want to guide people in the responses. So, one very simple question to see what people, what people thought out of our responses that we got is when, at what grade level should students start to bring devices home, school-provided devices specifically? I gave options for grades three through eight, and then other, where they could write anything in. I went through and took anybody who had written something in with other, and made it either match a grade level, or, or whatever they might have said. There were just a few responses that said things like, devices should go home on a need-based basis. So, if a family doesn't have access to a device, then they should be able to take one home earlier from the school. We had a couple that said something like that. We had a couple that said something like, please provide internet before you provide devices. We had a couple that said, at other grade levels, like kindergarten or first grade or 10th grade, but those were very small numbers, like single digits of numbers. So, everything that's beyond a single digit is represented here, in top bar being grade three, and I think it says 52. The bottom bar, well, it goes three, four, five, six is the big long one. So, you can see that current practice has 223. It's far and away our greatest response. Seventh, eighth, and ninth have, you know, in the 40s and 50s. And then the bottom one is never. So, these are people who wrote in, not at all, never, devices should not come home, anything that suggested, no, we don't want them in our house. And there's 27 there. So, we do have this pretty small group that's passionate and wants us to know that they don't want a device in their house. And so, that's a group that we really need to be mindful of, how do we help support best moving forward? It's nowhere near being a majority, but it is still a group that we have that's actively engaged in giving feedback as well, which we're grateful for their feedback. Another question that we always get from people is, how many of our kids have home internet access? Of course, this isn't all of our families responding. Of the people who responded, we get 574, or 95.3% who said, yes, they have a wireless internet connection in their house. We had, the next highest rate was 21 respondents, or 3.5% said they have internet only through a mobile data plan. And then we had five families say that they do not have any home internet access, and we had two families, or 3/10ths of a percent, say that they have only a wired connection to internet. So, again, not something that represents all of our families. We know that not every family has internet access, and it is a question that we are working on some potential solutions for as well. The rest of the survey, well, not quite all of the rest of it, but the bulk of the survey, like I said, was open-ended questions, where I really wanted to hear what families had to offer us in terms of suggestions. And so, these were the four questions. What would you like your students to do with technology? What are the benefits of the use of student technology devices in the district? What questions or concerns do you have about the use of student technology devices? And then what suggestions do you have for the district regarding the use of student technology devices? For the current questions, so this is a wealth of information for us moving forward. As I said at the start, our focus is always on supporting the learning of our students and the opportunities that we're preparing our students for. And there's a lot in here about the practices of our, of our teachers, the types of work that our students are doing, the types of things that students, or that parents would like to see their students doing. And those are some things that we'll continue to look at through the spring and in the summer, to plan for our next year. But the current pressing question is really the high school devices. And so, when we looked at those staff surveys, it's very clear at the younger ages that iPads are the, are the preference of our staff. And so, we would continue with iPads in those areas. And then at the high school, we had, this was in my last presentation, we had 22 staff members say that they would prefer an iPad for students. We had 20 high school staff members say that they would prefer a Chromebook for students. And then we had three people that chose both of those. So, I guess you could go to 25 and 23 instead of 22 and 20 responses for each, but three of those are the same people. And then, and a handful who typed in something else, like a laptop or whatnot. So, that sort of split between what the staff was saying they would prefer to work with, with their students, is what led into this conversation and led into having this focus group and the more in-depth surveying about what do we want to see our students doing with their technology. So, in order to take this, these open-ended questions, there are over 500 responses to each of these questions. So, it's a lot of data. Many of them are like a paragraph or even two paragraphs. So, there's a lot. What I did is I took only the responses that had a high school student in their, in their family. That was 235 responses of the 607, so over, over a third of them. And of those responses, I went to the suggestions and said, what do you want to see the district do regarding student technology devices? And so, in the suggestions, we had 164 writing comments, and I categorized them. We did this with the focus group. The focus group came up with 52 categories. That's a lot of categories. So, I took those buckets and made them a little bit more, a little bit broader. And we ended up with 20. Of those 20 categories of responses, they have anywhere between three and 21 responses in them. Some responses are put into multiple, like four or five of those buckets, because they mentioned all of those things. So, there are a few that are like that. Not many that go into four or five, but there are a few. So, whatever a response, whenever a response talked about, we need to add additional restrictions to what students can access on their device, or additional parental controls. I put it into that top bucket. That was our number one request from parents with any consistency, 21 of those. 19 mentioned a need for a keyboard or a need for typing in our curriculum. 17 mentioned less time spent using technology during the day. And then we had 16 for all of the next ones. I mentioned in the, in the table, or in the packet, the differentiation of instructional strategies. Families said they want to see their students doing different things with the devices, and they want to see their students using a balance of tech and non-tech in their classes. We had 16 say that they wanted to see a device different than an iPad. Some of those were a laptop. Some of them were a Chromebook. At this point, a laptop is out of our, out of our, what we're looking at because of price. And so, cost prohibitive. We're moving from something in the $300 range to something in the $1,000 range, and that's not what we're looking to do budget-wise. You can ask Val about that too, but I'm pretty sure we're looking to stay within our last approved budget. So, we're not looking at laptops, even though we do have some responses that say that. We had 16 people say, hey, keep going, do what you're doing. I called that bucket, stay the course. And then we had 16 who said they want to see the technology leveraged in purposeful and innovative ways for their students' learning. And the one that I added in here is, I just went back to those results, because I had filtered out if they didn't say anything or if they said none. As I said, there were 235 total survey responses that had a high school student. 164 of those wrote something into this question. And 16 of them wrote none or nothing for suggestions. So, I just added that in today. The focus group feedback, these are the two links that I did have in your file. So, we had those presentations from CDWG and from Apple. We got quite a bit of feedback from that group on what they had seen, some questions. So, on one of those documents, if you go to that link, you can see that there are some questions where I put in some comments that respond to them, so that we could clear up some things that we were uncertain about. Then we reviewed the staff and the family feedback. You can see in that final meeting agenda, there's some of the questions that we still have moving forward, or some of the things that people were wondering about. And I put some responses to those questions as well. Things that are about the cost, or how do we manage these, or what would we do, things that are easy for me to answer right now. The consensus of that focus group is to stay with iPad at all levels, K through 12. That comes from our special education department wanting the accessibility features that suit all of our students, things like speech to text or integrated, if you look in the settings of an iPad, all of the accessibility features for vision and for reading, for hearing, for even some motion pieces and some contrast pieces, very helpful for many of our students. Not only our students who are in special ed, but some good features there. The language that is used by Cheryl Hall and Lori Warner, who are on this committee on this focus group, is universal design for learning. So, looking at the one item that you can do, the one thing that you can use that meets the most needs across the general need, and then those on the fringes as well. So, that's one of the top, one of those that rises to the top. And then the others have to do with the investment, both in our habits and our practice and our learning and the way that we have been working, things that we have gotten used to doing, and also monetary investment in terms of apps, textbooks, curricular materials, tools, things like that. So, physics teachers using apps that will graph and chart a trajectory with time stamped on it as well. Art, using apps for, for drawing and layering pieces. English, using a Shakespeare, Shakespeare and Bits app to read Shakespeare in a more engaging manner. Pieces like that. The American's textbook for all of our US history students, the World History textbook. So, those come in, in the investment piece. All right. Now, we get to cost. And this is where it's very straightforward when we look at, when we look at an iPad, they offer the iPad, and it's very, it's got a price. And you can actually just like look it up and see the price. And the case is $35. So, it's $294 for an iPad sixth generation. That's the newest iPad. It's this. They're probably going to release another iPad in two weeks. We don't really know, but it's a possibility. If they do, I think the guess is that it would take over that same current price point. I don't know for sure. One'll know in two weeks, so then I can redo my numbers. But it's something that would look like this, this same case that we've been using. The management system, the JAMP or CASPER, as it was called before, is $6 a year per device. It's only the devices that are in use. So, ones that sit on the shelf as a spare for students or that are out being repaired, we don't pay for those. We, they take a measure of our average use, basically. We pay that for the year. Additional costs are things that are possible, things that we have talked about to get to those desires that teachers have mentioned and the parents have mentioned, and that maybe we will hear from students. So, we have some questions here. The possibility of a keyboard case, something that looks like this. Hope Langston texted and asked how my presentation went. She doesn't know I'm still presenting. Showed up on that screen. So, this type of case is available. And you can see the keyboard. It comes off as well if you wanted to really leverage the camera video kind of stuff. There's two writing pieces. We often hear about handwriting. These are greatly improved over any pens, stylus, we've seen in the past. We have the Apple pencil. This thing has some really great technology in it. It Bluetooth pairs with the iPad. Then nothing else will write on this iPad, except for this pencil. It completely rejects your palm, anything else that touches it. So, you can really write really naturally with the palm rejection. This also rejects your palm. This is called the Logitech Crayon. And I brought it to show you, because when I say crayon, I feel like people envision like the fat Crayola crayon, and it doesn't really look like that. So, it is like a, like a pen. It's much cheaper. So, you can see the Apple pencil is $89. The Logitech Crayon here is $49. The wired keyboards that we have used in the past or that we have in multiple classrooms are $45. So, those are some add-on possibilities with, with our iPads. On the Chromebook side, it's a little more complicated. There are many options with Chromebooks. So, I've been evaluating devices, looking at what other schools are using. We know we want a touchscreen if we go with a Chromebook. And so, there are a couple that rise to the top. There's an Acer model. There's a Lenovo model, and there's an HP model. The Lenovo and the Acer are much more used in schools. And the Acer is the one that I arrived at as the top choice, based on a recommendation for service, if we were to need it, that they have a better service experience for repairs or technical support. It's a different process than what we're used to, so I keep on learning about this. So, we wouldn't do a case with a Chromebook. The management is a little different. It's $25 per device, but it's for the life of the device, and it's not transferable. So, you just pay for all of them, whether you have them in use or not. The management system is different than what we have right now. So, that's particularly concerning to me with the request from parents for additional support and control and restriction. We also had parent requests that said, hey, let us leverage the whole use of this device. We have a device that comes home, and we buy the exact same device, so that we can have one that does everything it's supposed to do. So, there's some parent needs to manage the device on each side of more restriction and less restriction, I think. And on the iPad, we know how to do that, and we can do it with the management system that we have in place. On the Chromebook, that management license doesn't cover that kind of granular management of devices. And so, we would need to buy additional services to do that. Go Guardian, I have a meeting coming up with them. They provide a suite of like five extra tools that do things like restrict content of websites, or maintain a history of what kids are doing on a device, so that you can go back and check that. Another tool that allows teachers to see the screen of a Chromebook that's in their classroom or on their student roster. Those are things that we already have kind of embedded with the Apple tools that we're using. So, those would be an additional cost going to Chromebooks. So, I'll have some pricing on that by the time we get to the work session next week. So, when we look at potential plans, and this is a lot of information on one slide, our current lease and management approval from our capital funds is, for the lease and the management together, was $422,000. That's the target, is to stay within that same amount. And so, when I look at possibilities of what to do with that, we could stick with something very similar to what we do right now, bumping our one-to-one down from currently fourth through 12th grade to now third through 12th grade. So, we would have one device for every two students, an iPad, a full-size iPad for students in grades K through two. And then we would have one-to-one devices for grades three through 12. Then, that's 4,150 iPads with this model, 4,150 cases. I put 350 Apple pencils in that quote for the teachers, because it's a possibility for the writing when you're presenting, to be able to present a really nice graph, a really nice handwritten message, or whatever it might be, from anywhere in your room. a really nice handwritten message, or whatever it might be, from anywhere in your room. So, the pencil, we do have a handful of teachers trying that out right now, but pencil for teachers. That JAMP management, I just added on to the top of that because it would not be included in our lease at this point. And what you get for the whole total purchase price of all of that equipment is about $1.4 million. If you spread that out over the four years of a lease, that's about $350,000 a year. That does not include the leasing costs, so it would be a small amount more than that. We'll have that kind of finalized proposal soon, and then we'll get it redone in two weeks when they have a different pricing structure potentially. And then, at that $6 per device, I thought we, we actually manage about 4,000 iPads at any given time, so we'd be looking at about $24,000 a year for the JAMP management. The next option would be that we go to the same iPad, the same number of iPads, but we add on this crayon and the keyboard case like that for each of our high school students, just high school students. That's where we have the requests for keyboards showing up more than any other place. So, that would reduce the number of these STM cases to 2,650. We'd get 1,500 setups like this for our high school students. I took out the pencils for staff in that one because cost is getting high. So, it goes to about $1.6 million, 402,000 a year, plus 24,000 of the JAMP management. The final one would do a mix of Chromebooks and iPads, so iPads at the same numbers, so one to two for K-2, one-to-one for grades 3 through 12, and then Chromebooks for grades 9 through 12, one-to-one, and then also then for the staff. They would have the matching device of their, of the students that they're working with. That would be 2,400 iPads with the STM cases, 200 pencils that would again go back to staff. That would be elementary and middle school teachers, licensed staff. We would have JAMP management for the iPads, and then we would have 1,650 Chromebooks that would be the 9 through 12 students and high school staff with the management. So, that comes out to about $1,426,000, or $407,000 per year. Let me talk about that. The Chromebooks, they don't do a four-year lease, they do a three-year lease. So, we're leveraging a little bit less spread on the, on the payments there. So, that, that figure is figured with a four-year term on the iPads and a three-year term on the Chromebooks. And then the JAMP piece lowering down to $14,000 because we're not managing quite as many iPads. So, there's some pricing scenarios. They all stay within a fairly reasonable realm of possibility, very close to what we're currently, currently spending out of capital for our leases. So, some considerations. And there's a reason I still continue to look at the Chromebooks. I mean, I'm hearing from our focus groups and consensus that says, "This is the device we know. The new iPads look like they, they can do what we need them to do." We have a lot of people relying on some tools already that we want to keep using. But, we still have a lot of our high school staff that wasn't a part of that focus group and made a request for something different than the iPad. And so, I want to be sure that we hear the needs, and we really know what we, what we need for our teachers to have our, what our students need to have for our teachers to meet their goals too. There are some considerations I look at when, if we're looking at changing to a Chromebook. That's our technology support staff. I know we've mentioned it at these meetings in the past, but we're pretty stretched. We have a small team, and it would be learning a new couple of systems of management and deployment of devices, so I am a little bit concerned about that. We do think about the investment in training and learning with the current devices, with iPads and the apps that we've been using and such, the ability to manage devices. I know that we can do the parent and school restrictions fairly well with iPads. I think we can also do that fairly well with Chromebooks. We just have to learn it and get there and purchase the right tools to do it. As far as deployment of content goes, we have a lot of apps that we use only for certain students, so like Book Creator for, you know, Team 1 6th grade, which would still be fine because they'd still be on iPads, or the Shakespeare and Bits for the English folks here in 9th grade. And you, we deploy those with like smart groups of kids. We go, "Hey, if you're a 9th grader, you get this." And that happens on the backend of our management system. It can, it can pull out information about who's using which devices and assign the right licenses to them as we go. We tell it to do that, but we have very good searching features to be able to do that. That is limited with the Chrome management without purchasing something else additional. The smart grouping of students piece is that as well. We have searches that happen in the background all the time on our student iPads, so when they open them up and they check into the internet, they check in with our management system, and the management system would notice things like if they got around our App Store restrictions and they had installed Snapchat, it would say, "Oh, you have Snapchat. Now, I'm going to take away your camera." So, we do that stuff in the background without having to physically check, and that's, that's been a helpful thing for us. So, I wouldn't want to lose some of that. Concerns about internet necessity? Chrome can work offline on a lot of things, and that I don't doubt at all that our students could be successful. My concern is that they go home and they don't have what they need already up and running, so then they, they have to have it ready when they get there, and there's a little bit more reliance, like something like iMovie or Pic collage, or any videos or photos that you've taken on your iPad live on the iPad, whereas Chrome is going to store them on, on your Google Drive. And so, you would need to be able to access it to open them at least. There is local storage to manage your projects that you're currently working on. It's just a different mindset, and I don't want to get trapped with that. Now, we know most of our families have internet, but we still need to be mindful that not all do. And then just, I have a few concerns with vendor and repair support. We have a very good developed relationship with Apple, and so, they come and they're here in person, they check in on us, they give us materials for education, things like that, for training up our teachers. When something doesn't work, I like call their cell phones and say, "Hey, we need help with this." And I think like the, the Acer one came to the top for support, but that's going into like a, a group of four or five support technicians, and they said, "Oh, you get to know them because you deal with the same four or five over and over." And for us, that's a going from a first-name basis with one to a, like a kind of a calling tree or something. And I just think that's, that's just a concern. It might work just great. My, my thought process is going, I want to make sure it works great. So, those are some of the things I still have in mind. Joel Lear and I are working together on this. We have been talking about how do we communicate with high school staff and intentionally understand what their needs are with the devices, with the requests that they're making, and also intentionally let people know what the devices can do so that we make sure that we don't have misconceptions, people have good information, and we move forward in a, in a positive way, kind of hearing all sides. So, that's the information that I bring tonight, and I will be back again next week for a work session where we can definitely dive into some maybe gritty, but thank you for your time, and definitely would entertain any questions.
I just want to point out, Kim and I will be at the District Youth Council meeting this Wednesday, seeking some feedback from District Youth Council about the choices that we have, and that's going to tee up a student survey. We want to make sure we get some feedback from the DYC about the survey before we send it out. So, I just want to be really clear, the student voice at the high school is going to be an important part of this.
I also met with a student today during the flex hour, just regarding thoughts on student devices. This particular student had done a, a service learning project regarding student devices. Her request was laptops. I had to tell her that was not in the budget, but we did come to some other, like, "What would you pick if you had this or this?" And so, we talked specifically about the features of a Chromebook, and we're looking at a Chromebook that's a nice Chromebook, right? It would flip around, and so, it would fold all the way back on itself flat, and you could write on it. Doesn't come with a stylus, but we could, we could get something. It has a keyboard, so it's like, it's a good Chromebook. And I, you know, I said, "What would you, what would you pick? Would you pick plugging in a keyboard to type, or would you pick using the Chromebook?" She's like, "Well, I would come here first and see if there's a computer." And if there's not, she's like, "I might pick the Chromebook." But, she's like, "I would prefer an iPad with a keyboard over a Chromebook for a device I take home." So, those kinds of things that I, you can't get to very easily in a quick survey. I said, "I would do surveys that have checkboxes for high school students to really get their input," and this student said, "You'll get a good response. People are interested in what we're going to do next year." So, I would imagine that'll roll out very quickly. I'll, I'll have an example for our District Youth Council on Wednesday.
Questions. Tom?
I guess you can use those pens to teach cursive.
Mm-hmm. They have to sign something.
Yeah. That's the first time I've seen a keyboard case. Was that part of the comparison between, because people want keyboards, was that a comparison between the Chromebooks and the iPads, or was it just the, the basic iPad and the Chromebook?
We've only talked basic iPad and Chromebook at this point.
So, if, if that were part of the conversation and the comparison, would people say, "Well, because we're getting a keyboard and a case, let's stick with the iPad as opposed to the Chromebook," potentially?
Well, that's what I'm trying to decipher with high school teachers, is to say, if you requested a Chromebook, or if you now have decided that you would prefer a Chromebook, what's the reason? Is it a, is it a keyboard, and what would you do? Like, are you picturing something like this, or are you picturing something like this? If it looks like that, do you still prefer a Chromebook? You know, those are the kinds of questions where we ask iPad, Chromebook, or other, and I don't know the specifics. And so, that's where at the high school, we're really trying to get to the bottom of what, what are the specifics.
Right, but, but that wasn't...
It wasn't pictured and shown, like, here's what your iPad would look like. And even part of me wondered if it was cost prohibitive because these are $100 each for the case, and so, I had some concerns there too, but I think we could make it work.
Well, a keyboard is what, $45, and the case is $35 or something?
Yeah.
So, it's kind of a wash, and it's all nice and...
The other thing that we also haven't talked about is the resale of our current fleet of iPads, and so, I don't want to rely on it too much because it's not done and over yet. I have gotten a first quote on what we could get right now to sell those back. Now, it'll probably change because we're waiting until June. We're not going to sell them before the kids are done with them. But, we do have some, some value in those devices to also leverage potentially a purchase of cases, or a purchase of, you know, Matt and I talked today about, what does a card of Chromebooks cost? Well, how many keyboards could you get for that? So, do you just put in all, every single classroom 20 keyboards? We could do that potentially with the, with the money from the sale of current devices. So, I think there's still some decisions to be made. The first thing is, what's the actual like operating system functionality that you want in your device, and then what are the things that you need to make it work best for what you need your students to do?
Thank you.
Other questions?
I think just to remind you, we've got a, you know, work session on March 19th where we're going to have a chance to really dive into it, and I really appreciate Kim talking about the crayon or the pencil, because I, as you know, I have been with this kind of thing since the beginning, and I've used everything from teaching people actually how to write on the first iPads with, by, you know, grabbing your finger like this to, I've probably used nearly every stylus known to humankind, and the, the crayon and the pencil really are game changers for how people can interact with these devices. And if you think about a lot of the discussions about how to best use technology for learning, you know, Dr. Hardy and I have talked a number of times about writing things down and, and how that pencil really does this fantastic job, and, and now the conversion of that handwritten, even my handwritten...
Mine too.
...material to text is, is just amazing. For anybody who remembers the old Palm Pilots and how, what a kind of a joke that was, this is truly amazing in terms of being able to convert that. So, of some of the things that we have thought about, dreamt in terms of the ability to change how students interact with learning materials, the crayon or the pencil really are a game changer in a number of ways, so I really appreciate seeing those included in some of the possibilities.
So, I had a couple of quick questions, and just sort of setting up the work session you know we're having next Tuesday at 5:00 PM, and it's just going to be really great to delve into this. So, what I understand is that, will the student survey...
Be done.
Be done by then?
That's the...
And then, how are you, I, I appreciate that you're delving in with the high school staff to really say, you know, what, what are you looking for from Chrome versus iPad to make sure you really understand? How is that process going to take place?
The plan is a full day, likely on Monday of next week, to, to be stationed here and to invite teachers to sign up for time throughout the day, so that ideally, Mr. Lear and I could be together and hear all of the requests and know, "All right, here's what's going on, here's what people need," and really take some solid notes on what are their, what are the real actual requests, and what are the questions that you have about the devices?
Okay, excellent. And then, the three-year Chromebook lease, would there be some value at the end of the lease for those to resell back like we're looking for with the iPad?
There would be. It's not as much as an iPad.
Okay. And then, as far as the management system, we're, you're feeling comfortable, or otherwise, I'm assuming we would be seeing a change from CASPER, or whatever they call themselves now?
Yeah, JAMP is what they call themselves. JAMP is a very solid management system.
Good. And then, the other question I had, I was just, I did pull up some of your survey responses, and there was some where they were really talking about, there was a certain segment of staff really wanting one-on-one K and first grade. Is that something you would see happening before, you know, we're entering into a next lease? When do you see that with seesaw, they indicated some of that, you know, and we see seesaw now coming on the horizon and the good things that's doing? So, so what are you really thinking there? You're responding to what you saw in the surveys, but from your standpoint, that one-on-one, and when you'd see that happen literally at all our, all levels?
Well, I have a lot of thoughts about that, actually, so thank you for that question. First, I look at price point of what we actually have with money to, to manage and to, to get the devices that we already have, and then what do we, what can we add in? And so, currently, we can drop down to 3rd grade. We do, we had two very engaged focus group members who are primary teachers, and they want one-to-one devices in their classroom. So, I did float an idea today. It's a, it's a brand-new, not fully thought-through idea yet, so I, I will preface it with that. But, to, to ask our K-2 teachers, how many of them are interested in exploring what a one-to-one would look like in those classrooms, and with some requirement for professional development on pedagogy, and with some requirement for sharing the learning back to other teachers, for leading some sessions, for sharing some learning data back about what kids are doing and what you're seeing in outcomes. Let's just say, if we had eight, if we had eight teachers who asked, I don't know how many are actually very interested. I know some are not interested at this point. If we had eight, and they already have one to two devices, we only need about 100 more to get one-to-one in those classrooms, and so, it would be an opportunity to say, "Hey, we could fit those into this lease and, and try this out." And then, if we wanted to go to more classrooms, we could do another lease at some point if we decide that that's a priority. But, even in our current capital funding, we might be able to fit those who actually ask for it and say, "I want to do this," as some way to inform our practice moving forward.
Okay. All right. Ellen?
So, this is more to tee up for next week. Two areas that I'd be interested in hearing more about when you're thinking of this is, one, you, you have been doing this on the same level of staffing, and so, I guess I'm interested, as you think about these options, if, how that would, what implications it would have for tech staffing. And then, the second thing is, you've been doing this huge amount of work to get all of this data and perceptions and feedback from others, and when the decision comes before the board, it'll be important for us to have some sort of back, communication back as to how is that feedback used? You know, we can't have everything, but how, how did that shape the, the decision that comes before the board? I think would be really important. But, thank you for all of that.
Agreed. That's one of the challenges is, how do we respond to all of the feedback because it's very different? And to, and to help, we're very appreciative for the feedback that we got. And so, I want, I want families, and I want teachers, and I want students to know that I'm grateful for their feedback. And it's been shared with a lot of people who are helping me to go through it with that focus group as one, and with Hope, she's been very helpful in going through all the feedback. But, it's, it's a matter of going, we can't take it all at once, and so, we do have to say at some point, "We're still working with this, but here are some pieces that we can respond to now, and we will, we will need some communications to families too about that."
Excellent. So, we're really looking forward to the work session.
We do.
A week from tomorrow. Unless there's any last minute questions?
Okay.
And then, I guess too, you know, Ellen presented well, you know, some things that, that she's thinking of, and if board members have specific things they want to be sure, we know you'll come well-prepared with lots of information, but if there's something specific to be sure it's, it's a part of the packet we'll get for the work session, that would be...
Certainly.
Okay, excellent. Thanks, Kim.
Thank you.
Okay. So, that is our last item for discussion. So, we, at this point, will move on to approval of the consent agenda?
And I just want to point out, in the consent agenda, there was also a grant application approval that I failed to mention at the beginning of the meeting.
Yes, excellent. So board members, we do have that on the table file. So that would be part of the consent grouping. Thank you, Dr. Hillman. So is there anything anyone would like to pull from the consent grouping? Is there a motion to approve the consent grouping? Moved by Jeff. Is there a second? Second by Amy. All those in favor of approving the consent grouping, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay. You might be de-icing the roof is what it sounds like up top here, yes.
Okay. So now we will move on for items for individual action. We have one item, resolution for non-renewing a coaching contract. Is there a motion to approve the resolution as presented? Moved by Noel. Is there a second? Second by Rob. Discussion? Okay, this is a resolution, so requires a roll call vote. Anita?
Hurwitz?
Aye.
Hardy?
Aye.
Strabholz?
Aye.
Quinell?
Aye.
Brannia?
Aye.
Iverson?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. That's it for, we only had one item for individual action. So we move on to items for information. Dr. Hillman, we have the March 2019 enrollment report.
Yes, you'll see the latest enrollment report that we have, up just a couple of students since the last month. So we are on what we call the cruising altitude of the year where we have evened out with our enrollment.
Okay. Is there any questions on the enrollment report? Yes, Rob?
Did it add all the numbers up? But I know in the past couple of years, we've had some classes that were like bubbles that were big and we had to add. Do you see any of that coming up? Any specific classes?
So we have our, the largest class that we've ever seen, which some of them are sitting in this room right now, are graduating in June. And so our senior class has been one of the larger groups. We also have seen each year, what's interesting is when you look at our elementary numbers and as they transition to the middle school, they look somewhat similar a lot of years. And then we see quite a bit of enrollment at sixth grade, either students coming from one of the charter schools or coming from one of the pro field schools, students moving in, students choosing to use the open enrollment options presented. And so we've seen some increase in those middle school classes where we are having overall higher enrollment than we've seen for some time, but that's been stabilizing out too. So what we don't see right now is another very large grade level like we had had with this year's seniors. To a, to a lesser extent, this year's freshman class is a, is a little bit bigger of a group, but nothing near what the current senior class is. We, we are watching very closely this year's, this, next year's kindergarten class because we actually think that's going to be the opposite issue. We have been working really hard, thanks to Director of Finance, Val Mertendorf, working with Erin Bailey and Community Services and using our new guide K-12 system to really